I will call the hearing to order at 1:01 PM. Ms. Johnson, can we have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call. Chair Bauckey?
Here.
Vice Chair Wardlow?
Here.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Here.
Commissioner Boss is absent. Commissioner DeLucia?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Wiskom?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is preliminary matters. First on the preliminary matters is requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or additions of ex agenda items. Ms. Archanega, do we have any continuance, withdrawals, or postponements?
Chair Bauckey, we have none.
Okay. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is announcements and appeals. Do we have any of those?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. We do have one announcement of an appeal of 7/11 Bath Street. It was a setback modification at the staff hearing officer that was denied and subsequently appealed by the applicant. It will be coming to your commission following.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is review, consideration, and actions of the following draft Planning Commission minutes and resolutions. We have two before us. One is the February 8, 2024 Planning Commission meeting minutes. And secondly, the Planning Commission Resolution Number 001-2414 Anacapa Street. Commissioners, do you have any changes or corrections on either one? I see none, so...
Make a motion to move...
I'll second it.
Both. Can we do that at the same time?
If everybody was present, yes.
Mr. Chair, part of the interruption. I've been notified that City TV is not broadcasting this hearing, so if we can take a moment to confirm that we're broadcasting, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry for the delay.
I can go to the floor. There's a floor on the main that I've never been to, but I can go there. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Maybe, what, $10 each or something? Does that sound reasonable? Huh? Okay.
She hustling for money. We're good? Okay. We're ready to reconvene, and I'm going to go back a step. We do have a withdrawal that we failed to notice. Could you, Ms. Archanega, could you please put that in the record?
Yes, so Chair Bauckey, just a point of clarification. 135 East Ortega has been continued to the next hearing, and that was marked in our revised agenda that we have for today.
Okay, thank you. So, we are back to the minutes and the resolution. At that time, somebody was going to make...
I made a motion to move both the minutes and the resolution.
And I seconded it.
In one vote.
Okay, so with that, can we have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner DeLucia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiskom?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Chair Bauckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next on our agenda is public comments pertaining to items that are not on this agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak? You have two minutes. You come before the commission.
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. At this time, I have received any speaker slips. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on general business, that's, again, items not on today's agenda, you can fill out a speaker slip at the back of the room. I'm not seeing any movement, so I'll go ahead and move to virtual public comment. If you wish to speak on Zoom at this time, you can raise your hand, and we'll call on you. I'm not seeing any hands raised, but we did receive ring correspondence from Christine Hall, which was distributed to the commission prior to the meeting. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Bauckey.
Okay. Moving on, our agenda next is a continued item, continued from August 3 for the property at 101 Garden Street. There are three requests, a parking modification, a development plan, a coastal development permit, and also a finding under SEQA that the appropriate SEQA exemption is being performed. Do any of the commissioners have any ex-party communication that needs to be discussed or disclosed at this time?
I do have some. I did have a conversation with Brian Cornell and an email conversation which looped the city staff into that conversation about finding an economic analysis consultant to provide the housing impact study. All that conversation was looped with the staff, and you need to make that disclosure. With that, we have going to have the staff presentation first, then the applicant's presentation, then comments from the public, then the commission will ask its questions and deliberate, and we'll move on to a conclusion. So, what we have today, we have Kathleen Kennedy, the project planner for this project, and she's here to give a staff presentation. Ms. Kennedy, the floor is yours. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. Yes, I'm Kathy Kennedy, project planner for this project. The project is 101 Garden Street, a proposed 250-room hotel, and as you stated, it was continued from the last Planning Commission hearing on August 3, 2023. Just to familiarize you with the location of the project, it's located here on Garden Street between Santa Barbara Garden and Yanana Lee, and this shows the outline of six lots. A part of the project would be the merger of the six lots. Here's an aerial view of the project site, showing the existing condition, a series of buildings, storage containers, and other miscellaneous storage items. This project is located in the Cabrillo Plaza specific plan. It's in Area A here to the left. Just a reminder that we are obviously reviewing the specific plan and how this project fits in with that. Brief project description, it's a 250-room hotel. There's subterranean parking, the second and third-story building with a roof deck. There are proposed six affordable rental units set aside for employees, and there's a habitat restoration area of the drainage area along Garden Street. The discretionary applications before you today, parking modification to allow less than the required number of parking spaces, development plan to allow the construction of 164,000 square feet of non-residential development, and a coastal development permit to allow the proposed development in both the appealable and non-applicable jurisdictions of the coastal zone. There have been a number of public hearings in the past. You had a Planning Commission concept review hearing in August of 2019. Similar, actually right before that hearing, there was a Historic Landmarks Commission concept review hearing, and then another HLC concept review in May of 2022. And then last year, the Planning Commission reviewed the project to consider approval of the project that was continued to August, and then that hearing again was continued to today. Reviewing the Planning Commission minutes, we determined that there were essentially four items that were requested to bring forward today for this hearing, so I'd like to concentrate and focus on these four items. One is the documentation of the community outreach by the applicant. Commissioners requested some more information about that. They did, the applicant did provide a handout documentation that is attached to their applicant letter, which is part of your staff report. You also asked for the correspondence with the Coastal Commission regarding the lower-cost visitor-serving accommodations, and I'll go into that as well, and that is attached. We had requested a continuance to further review the SEQA determination, so we've done that. And then you asked the applicant to provide a new housing impact study, and they've done that as well, so we'll get into each of these four items. Just briefly, we'll go over what the proposed project is. The plans have not changed since last hearing in August. They are the exact same plan set as what you reviewed in August. Here's the overall site plan. There are three entrances to the proposed facility along Garden Street. It's the main entrance, also along Yanana Lee and Santa Barbara Street. There's subterranean parking, 238 vehicle parking spaces, and 26 bicycle parking spaces below. On the first floor, you'll see the area in the upper right circled. Those are the six affordable residential units that we discussed. Again, this was shown at the last hearing. This is the first floor. There are also breakfast areas, meeting rooms, the bar and lounge area as well on the first floor. On the second floor, consists of all guest rooms. On the third floor, there are guest rooms. Also, in this area here are the rooms that were moved from the first floor to accommodate the residential units, so they added more units or guest rooms to the third floor to keep the tally at 250 rooms. And there's also a fitness area on the third floor. And then the roof deck, there's an accessible roof deck here on the left side and solar panels on the remainder of the roof. Here's the proposed landscape plan, number of new trees being proposed, removal of some trees. There's a habitat restoration plan for this area down here next to Garden Street, and I'll show a blow-up of that area. This whole area will be restored, removal of non-native plantings and installation of native plantings. And there's also a 15-foot buffer around the whole area. The project site is located in a flood zone, for the most part AE. Certain port, this outline here is just one of the parcels. As I mentioned earlier, there are six, so the actually parcel includes this area down here. But for the benefit of talking about the flood zone, it's in the AE zone, somewhat in the AH and partly in the X. There have been some questions about the underground parking garage and whether it actually is allowed. Want to note that we have checked and double-checked this each time we've been asked about it, and the Building and Safety Division has determined that this is allowed in this zone. Here's some information about that. The building, being a basement garage, is allowed, so it meets FEMA's definition of a mixed-use building, meaning that there's a minimum of 25% non-residential uses and a maximum of 75% residential uses. And for FEMA purposes, there are different definitions of residential and non-residential. We think of hotel rooms as non-residential. We think of that as square footage, but for FEMA, it's considered residential use, as well as other lobbies, offices used by the building management, mailrooms, et cetera, all considered residential. And then the non-residential include parking, storage, other offices, meeting rooms, swimming pools, exercise facilities. So they're divided up that way. This project meets the definition and is allowed in this zone. And the project would be subject to the Flood Plane Management Ordinance, Title 22, all the requirements to reduce flood hazards. In the previous two hearings, we did go through all the other items. We talked about the background of the specific plan, zoning ordinance consistency related to setbacks, et cetera, consistency with the specific plan, permitted uses. Went through all the different development regulations, such as traffic, visual, open space, housing, et cetera. So I'm not going to go through all those, except the housing. That's outstanding item to discuss. We talked about the parking modification. We talked about the development plan and why it's required, the different coastal land use policies, and whether the project's consistent or not. So, not going to go into any more detail with those unless you have questions. So, just getting to the additional information that was requested from the last hearing, documentation is in the staff report regarding the community outreach, and I expect the applicant will provide more detail about that in their presentation. Regarding the Coastal Commission correspondence, I've attached in Exhibit J our email communication back and forth. City staff had met with Coastal Commission staff virtually and formulated this condition of approval that they were satisfied with that ensures that the hotel would be maintained as a moderate-cost hotel. So we've added that, and that was in your packet last time, Condition G5, about that moderate-cost hotel provision. Having that, the project is therefore consistent with the coastal policy regarding lower-cost visitor recreational facilities. That's our policy 3.2-12. The third item is SEQA, and then we have Julia Pujot, Environmental Analyst, to go through that process, and then I'll turn back to me to go conclude with the housing and other issues. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Chair Bauckey, planning commissioners, my name is Julia Pujot, and I am the City Environmental Analyst, and I have been asked to go over the decision to prepare an analysis using 15183 and the process. Back in August 2023, staff previously recommended an infill exemption under SEQA Guidelines Section 15332, infill projects. This was because staff had thought the project had met criteria for an infill project exemption. The project is an infill site with land uses consistent with the general plan. The site has no habitat value for endangered species, and staff determined that there were no significant impacts based on the review of special studies prepared for the project. However, a categorical exemption cannot be used for a site that is included on the Cortez list. While we were previously aware that there was a leaking underground storage tank in the 1990s on the site, the tank had been removed, and staff had incorrectly interpreted the section of the state government code and did not know that the site continued to be on the Cortez list even after the tank was removed. Staff were later informed that once a property is listed, it is listed indefinitely, even though the storage tank was removed, and therefore a categorical exemption cannot be used for the parcel. Following the Planning Commission hearing in August 2023, staff considered a range of SEQA options to complete the SEQA process, including a traditional initial study as well as SEQA streamlining processes that are generally available for infill projects. As part of any planning application review, staff will consider SEQA streamlining options. Streamlining is encouraged by the SEQA guidelines, by the State Office of Planning Research, and by local staff procedures. Considerations for streamlining for this project include the following. Adherence to the SEQA guidelines. The SEQA guidelines direct agencies to use exemptions for qualified projects before moving on to a negative declaration or EIR process. This is Section 15061. This project meets criteria for SEQA streamlining under 15183, and staff use the same standard of review and the same procedures for planning applications. Additionally, staff noted the existence of SEQA EIRs that had included a plan-level review of this site. This includes the Cabrillo Plaza specific plan EIR and the 2011 general plan EIR. Lastly, staff had information on existing site conditions and project impacts based on site-specific technical studies and from prior application review. After consideration, staff concluded that streamlining under SEQA Section 15183 is the appropriate process for this project. On the slide is the intent for SEQA from Section 15183, Section A. SEQA mandates that projects which are consistent with the development density established by existing zoning, community plan, or general plan policies for which an EIR was certified shall not require additional environmental review, except as might be necessary to examine whether there are project-specific significant effects which are peculiar to the project site. This streamlines the review of such projects and reduces the need to prepare repetitive environmental studies. Next slide, please. To go to the criteria, to go to the criteria for 15183 projects, the criteria includes that a project is consistent with a community plan adopted as part of the general plan, such as the Cabrillo Plaza specific plan. Alternatively, a project may be consistent... But for the benefit of talking about the flood zone, it's in the AE zone, somewhat in the AH and partly in the X. There have been some questions about the underground parking garage and whether it actually is allowed. Want to note that we have checked and double-checked this each time we've been asked about it. And the building and safety division has determined that this is allowed in this zone. Here's some information about that. The building being a basement garage is allowed. So it meets FEMA's definition of a mixed-use building, meaning that there's a minimum of 25% non-residential uses and a maximum of 75% residential uses. And for FEMA purposes, there are different definitions of residential and non-residential. We think of hotel rooms as non-residential. We think of that as square footage. But for FEMA, it's considered residential use as well as other lobbies, offices used by the building management, mailrooms, et cetera, all considered residential. And then the non-residential include parking, storage, other offices, meeting rooms, swimming pools, exercise facilities. So they're divided up that way. This project meets the definition and is allowed in this zone. And the project would be subject to the Flood Plane Management Ordinance, Title 22, all the requirements to reduce flood hazards. In the previous two hearings, we did go through all the other items. We talked about the background of the specific plan, zoning ordinance consistency related to setbacks, et cetera, consistency with the specific plan, permitted uses. Went through all the different development regulations such as traffic, visual, open space, housing, et cetera. So I'm not going to go through all those except the housing. That's outstanding item to discuss. We talked about the parking modification. We talked about the development plan and why it's required, the different coastal land use policies and whether the project's consistent or not. So not going to go into any more detail with those unless you have questions. So just getting to the additional information that was requested from the last hearing. Documentation is in the staff report regarding the community outreach and expect the applicant will provide more detail about that in their presentation. Regarding the Coastal Commission correspondence, I've attached in Exhibit J our email communication back and forth. City staff had met with Coastal Commission staff virtually and formulated this condition of approval that they were satisfied with that ensures that the hotel would be maintained as a moderate-cost hotel. So we've added that. And that was in your packet last time, Condition G5, about that moderate-cost hotel provision. Having that, the project is therefore consistent with the coastal policy regarding lower-cost visitor recreational facilities. That's our policy 3.2-12. The third item is SEQA. And then we have Julia Pujot, Environmental Analyst, to go through that process. And then I'll turn back to me to go conclude with the housing and other issues. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Chair Bauke, planning commissioners. My name is Julia Pujot and I am the City Environmental Analyst. And I have been asked to go over the decision to prepare an analysis using 15183 and the process. Back in August 2023, staff previously recommended an infill exemption under SEQA Guidelines Section 15332, infill projects. This was because staff had thought the project had met criteria for an infill project exemption. The project is an infill site with land uses consistent with the general plan. The site has no habitat value for endangered species. And staff determined that there were no significant impacts based on the review of special studies prepared for the project. However, a categorical exemption cannot be used for a site that is included on the Cortezia list. While we were previously aware that there was a leaking underground storage tank in the 1990s on the site, the tank had been removed and staff had incorrectly interpreted the section of the state government code and did not know that the site continued to be on the Cortezia list even after the tank was removed. Staff were later informed that once a property is listed, it is listed indefinitely even though the storage tank was removed and therefore a categorical exemption cannot be used for the parcel. Following the Planning Commission hearing in August 2023, staff considered a range of SEQA options to complete the SEQA process, including a traditional initial study as well as SEQA streamlining processes that are generally available for infill projects. As part of any planning application review, staff will consider SEQA streamlining options. Streamlining is encouraged by the SEQA guidelines, by the State Office of Planning Research and by local staff procedures. Considerations for streamlining for this project include the following. Adherence to the SEQA guidelines. The SEQA guidelines direct agencies to use exemptions for qualified projects before moving on to a negative declaration or EIR process. This is Section 15061. This project meets criteria for SEQA streamlining under 15183. And staff use the same standard of review and the same procedures for planning applications. Additionally, staff noted the existence of SEQA EIRs that had included a plan-level review of this site. This includes the Cabrillo Plaza Specific Plan EIR and the 2011 General Plan EIR. Lastly, staff had information on existing site conditions and project impacts based on site-specific technical studies and from prior application review. After consideration, staff concluded that streamlining under SEQA Section 15183 is the appropriate process for this project. On the slide is the intent for SEQA from this Section 15183, Section A. SEQA mandates that projects which are consistent with a development density established by existing zoning, community plan, or general plan policies for which an EIR was certified shall not require additional environmental review except as might be necessary to examine whether there are project-specific significant effects which are peculiar to the project site. This streamlines the review of such projects and reduces the need to prepare repetitive environmental studies. Next slide, please. To go to the criteria for 15183 projects, the criteria includes that a project is consistent with a community plan adopted as part of the general plan, such as the Cabrillo Plaza Specific Plan. Alternatively, a project may be consistent with the general plan itself. Next, the project needs to be consistent with a certified 2011 General Plan EIR. Staff determined that the project meets both of these criteria. Next slide piece. Thank you. 15183 is different from categorical exemptions and typically involves a more detailed level of review. Like an initial study, 15183 requires the preparation of an environmental checklist to determine if there are significant impacts peculiar to the sites. Project-specific analysis for each resource was completed for the project. Technical studies prepared for the project were used to support that analysis. Under 15183, the 15183 process, uniformly-applied development policies or standards may be used to address impacts from the project and therefore shall not be considered peculiar to the project. That means that additional SEQA analysis would not be required for those effects. Unlike a negative declaration or EIR, review under 15183 does not require a public review process, but it does require a public hearing. Lastly, under 15183, staff prepared a certificate of determination, which is included in the staff packet. The Certificate of Determination states that potentially significant environmental effects will be substantially mitigated by uniformly-applied development standards or policies and measures proposed as part of the project description. The environmental checklist included in the staff packet and referenced technical studies support this determination. Next slide. To quickly touch on the resource areas, staff analyzed all SEQA resource areas and site-specific studies were prepared for the project. This includes air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazardous materials, stormwater, sea level rise, train safety risks and noise. A couple areas of interest are hazardous materials and biological resources. And to go into a little bit more detail about each, the site has a history of contamination and includes remnant soil and includes remnant soil and groundwater contamination from previous industrial uses. There's historic debris from the 1925 earthquake in the region. And past uses of the site include the railroad spurred and freight storage lumberyard. A leaking underground storage tank was removed in the 1990s. And in 1994, the state issued a letter of no further action. Additional site investigations were completed at the site in 2003, 2012, 2019, and 2022. This was done with the oversight and review from the County Environmental Health Services. In 2022, the property was enrolled in the Voluntary Remediation Oversight Program. And the work plan was approved by the County Environmental Health Services was carried out in 2022. As a result of the work plan, it was identified that a remedial action plan needs to be completed. This would include project-specific soil a project-specific soil management plan for cleanup and removal of soils, a soil vapor barrier system, specifications for groundwater remediation and worker and public health and safety specifications. The project is included to include these actions. The project would complete the remedial action plan with oversight from the County Environmental Health Services prior to building permits. To move on to biological resources, the site is developed with light industrial uses and contains a drainage ditch along Garden Street with degraded non-native vegetation. Because of the hydraulic connection, the drainage is classified as a wetland feature. Biological reports prepared for the site did not identify endangered, rare, or threatened species or habitats that support these species. The reports concluded that there was no potential for these species to occur due to the non-native vegetation and isolation from other natural habitats. The applicant proposes to restore the entire drainage area with native riparian vegetation and exceeds the requirements in coastal policies for habitat restoration. In conclusion, staff feel the 15183 process is appropriate for this project. The project meets the SEQA guidelines criteria to allow for expedited review for projects included in a community plan-level EIR. This is consistent with the SEQA directive to review options for an exemption or streamlining prior to completing a negative declaration or EIR. In addition, SEQA mandates that environmental review for projects consistent with a general plan EIR shall be limited to effects peculiar to the site. Staff determined that following an extensive review of technical issues and special studies and with application of conditions of approval that implement uniformly-applied development standards, the project would not result in significant environmental effects. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you. So moving on to the fourth item, housing. Previously, there was a lot of discussion, of course, about housing. And it was mostly in relation to this specific plan development regulation in the specific plan, which is, which states, "Development proposals for areas A, B, or C," and we're talking about Area A again, "shall be accompanied by an analysis of short-term and long-term impacts upon the city's housing stock as discussed in the final EIR. The study at a minimum shall develop strategies and programs to minimize any potential adverse impacts consistent with city policy at the time of development plan review." Chair Bauke had asked me to provide this housing element policy out of the specific plan EIR, so I'm providing this for you. This is states that housing demand within the South Coast area, new employment-generating developments shall be in balance with available housing resources at prices affordable to projected new employees who will be moving into Santa Barbara from outside the South Coast market area. In this case, the project is potentially inconsistent due to its generation of indirect housing demand from employment generation. And then it says, "See Growth Inducement Section for additional discussion." So I have summarized the Growth Inducement Section of the EIR, which says, "Construction in regard to employment, construction employment, they state that it is assumed not to exceed the local labor supply." In regard to operational employment, they made an estimate that the demand would be seven dwelling units. And that would be for the complete specific plan area, not just Area A. In terms of economic growth, there would be property taxes, sales taxes, transient occupancy taxes and consumer spending. And then improved infrastructure, which has occurred, which includes the extension of Garden and Yan and Ali Streets. Moving along to the housing impact study. You had requested a new study and have the applicant describe the methodology for the study. So I'm just going to give a quick overview of it. There are some assumptions made in it. One was that there are 60 employees anticipated for the project. There would be 36 households associated with the workers at the project. They stated that 30.7% would be the proportion of workers in service-based jobs in Santa Barbara, who are city residents, and calculating those two numbers resulting in 11 housing units being the demand. The housing study also talked about commercial linkage fees. These have been adopted by other cities. And they state that typically only 20% of the, what would be the maximum allowable fee that a city could put into effect, that cities only typically have 20%. So therefore, it is only a partial mitigation of the housing demand. The study contends that the construction of the six units would represent actually 54.5% of the maximum demand, stating that it is much greater than other cities. The result would be six units. Five would be low-income studios. And one would be a moderate-income, two-bedroom unit. There are other things to consider when you're reviewing the housing. Just to note that the city does not have a commercial linkage fee or an affordable housing fee currently. We had said before, the prior development plan finding regarding whether a project would have an adverse impact on city and South Coast housing was removed because the direction from the updated general plan is to work towards a better balance of uses overall rather than on a case-by-case basis. That there is a benefit of having units constructed concurrently with the hotel at the time that the demand is generated. Also, I wanted to point out at this point, we did add to Exhibit M, which are all the applicable policies. We added the general plan housing element policies. So there's one extra page that was added. A little bit late, I think either yesterday or today, to your packet. And then just going back to that question of the specific plan development regulation, does this project then minimize any potential adverse impacts to housing? Just a couple of cleanup items. We did add two new conditions of approval since the last hearing. The tsunami hazard zone was added to B7. This is a required recorded condition. So we made sure that was in the, in the conditions of approval. And then the groundwater de-watering requirement that this de-watering plan is required prior to permit issuance, which was required anyway, but we just made it more clear by putting it in the conditions of approval. And as you know, there are certain findings to be made for these discretionary actions. So the first one is environmental review findings. Whether the project qualifies for an exemption from further environmental review under SEQA Guidelines Section 15183. We have the parking modification findings, that the parking modification will not be inconsistent with the purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance and will not cause an increase in the demand for parking space or loading space in the immediate area. The development plan findings. I just want to note that we do, in the staff report, go through these in more detail and provide more backup for the findings. But these are the, the basic findings in our ordinance. For the development plan, it's the proposed development complies with all provisions of the zoning ordinance, is consistent with the principles of sound community planning, will not have a significant adverse impact upon the city's aesthetics or character and that the size, bulk, and scale of the development will be compatible with the neighborhood and is consistent with the policies of the traffic management strategy. And the coastal development permit findings, that it is consistent with the policies of the California Coastal Act and all applicable policies of the city's local coastal plan. Staff's recommendation is to, is that the Planning Commission approve the project, making the findings that are outlined in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. And that concludes our staff presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next will be the applicant. The applicant will have 15 minutes to make their presentation. And whenever you're ready, please state your name for the record. And any of your team members that come up, please state their, have them state their name for the record. I believe I remember your name, Mr. Gilbert. Whenever you're ready.
Well, thank you again. It's good to see you guys. I'm just going to say a few words. I think you heard from the experts on your side and you'll, you'll hear some more from our side. But I just want to kind of reiterate the guidepost in which got us here today from, you know, the hotel side. There's a specific plan in place that labels, you know, the 250 key hotel as appropriate and adequate for this site. I think as part of that specific plan, there was an agreement the city put in place with the rights to get that right-of-way from Garden Street and Yan and Ali. Those benefits have been, you know, used by the public now for close to a couple decades. This project will also include significant benefits as it relates to TOT tax. It's going to range in the $2 to $3 million range. The sewer upgrade that we're doing is going to also be several million dollars. So I, I think I don't, that gets lost a lot of times in, in a lot of what's going on. But I think it's appropriate to, to know that this is the adequate site and the, the community benefits follow. I think the biggest thing that's come about since we last spoke is the housing element. It was adopted and certified. It was something that was in process while we were, you know, we've been in this process for several years now. In reading that document, it's very clear that the sites that are suitable for housing and in the inventory, this site is not one of them. So I, I think that needs to be really used as kind of the rule versus personal, people's personal opinion on, on whether or not this site should include housing. With that said, we were tasked with completing a housing study. We've got the experts here that will talk in a little bit more detail. But you'll see that we went above and beyond what's typically required of a lot of coastal cities in, in California. So we think we more than sufficient for what we've provided. We also have Dale Goldsmith here, who's a SEQA expert that can kind of help reiterate the soundness of what the planning department and the environmental found and also per our reports. So with that, I just want to leave you with, I think we all deserve a decision here today. We've done everything that was asked of us from reasonable, rational requests. And I think it'd be best if we could bring this to a head today. So with that, I'll hand it over to Brian. Thank you.
Ryan Cronell, architect, along with Dave Ireland from Delaware. Dave, let's just go through these slides quickly. You've, you've seen the, the design, obviously, multiple times. There's the residential units. As Kathy pointed out, we've got 120 select service rooms, which are typical hotel rooms. And then we have 130 extended stay keys. The parking is below. I think it's important to note that relative to flood hazards, the entrances to these, this underground parking structure is above the base flood elevation. So in terms of flooding, it, it should not flood except in some extraordinary event, which we know we're going to be having in the future. But nevertheless, it is designed to accommodate that. The residential keys here, you can go through these quickly, Dave. So that's where we added the rooms to replace the ones that were lost for the residential units. And the landscape plan, let's keep going. So these are just quick vignettes of the project. This was before and then after. We did this, the minor redesign. So not much change here again, before and after. View from across Garden, view from the railroad tracks and the coast, which shows that we're not blocking the mountain views. Back on Santa Barbara Street and then on Yan and Ali, where we reduced the massing there pursuant to some meetings with the homeowners across the street. I wanted to just mention a, a few things. I, I want to stress what the rights have contributed relative to the right-of-way. You know, if you took that two-plus acres in today's value down in the, in the waterfront, it's probably about $17 million worth of land. The other thing is to understand that the allowable residential units that we could put on this site are about 85 units. Those would not be price-restricted because this is not in the AUD overlay. So there's no inclusionary associated with it. So I fear that we'd end up with 85 fairly expensive rental units. Furthermore, you wouldn't have to park them. So you could build 85 units on the site without a single parking space. So just for consideration, obviously, the, the rights and dauntless agreed a long time ago to build a hotel. And that's, that's what we have presented before you today. So I'm going to turn it over to Jason Moody, who did the housing study to give his input. And we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jason Moody. I'm a principal at Economic and Planning Systems. A pleasure to be here today. EPS is a firm founded in 1982, California-based firm. Been around for 40 years doing this type of housing analysis for 40 years. You can go to the first slide. So we were retained by the applicant to, to estimate the housing demand associated with this project to address some of the specific provisions in the specific plan. The methodology we use is consistent with the commercial linkage fee methodology. A commercial linkage fee is a fee that's often charged on, on, on non-residential development to cover the cost of the affordable housing that it produces. Dozens of California cities have commercial linkage fees. Santa Barbara does not. EPS regularly works. We've created many of these commercial linkage fees. So we normally work for the public sector doing commercial linkage fees. The methodology we used here is consistent with that process. When we work for public sector clients. Can you go back one, just one, sorry? Santa Barbara doesn't have a commercial linkage fee, as already mentioned. But that's, doesn't put in a unique, most cities in California don't have commercial linkage fees. I'd say about maybe 5%, 10% too. You can go to the next slide. There we go. So key findings already mentioned. We estimate that the project would generate 10 affordable units and one moderate rate or market rate unit. And that compares to the six or about 60% of the afford. That's how mine differs from your 40, 54%. That 60% represents the affordable units only. It's about 55% of all units. Typical commercial linkage fees range from 1% to about 20%. So this is, compares to that 60%. You can go to the next slide. So really quickly, I just wanted to show you the data that we use to make this calculation. Most of this data- Most of this data is publicly available data. We usually rely on verifiable documental sources. On the, on the far right is the data we use, which is mostly census-based. The BLS is the Bureau of Labor Statistics. We provided our analysis in two scenarios for the income rate. One was based on the applicant's data, and one was based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics. The mean weighted average wage was between seventy-nine, eighty-two, eighty-two, being the slightly higher applicant version, seventy-nine being the BLS data. And then we did use this thirty, thirty-point-seven percent workers' capture rate in Santa Barbara, which is, again, a pretty customary approach when you're doing these types of commercial linkage fee studies. You can go to the next slide. So here's just a real detail on the, on the math. I won't go item by item, but you can see that eleven is a product, and the staff did a great job of summarizing those calculations. The far below is the distribution by income level, one, one very low, two, most of them are in the low, which is eight percent of average median income, and then the one is the above moderate. You can go to the last slide. So this is a, a, a brief representation, a representative sample of other cities that have commercial linkage fees, and the percent of that commercial linkage fee that covers the actual affordable housing impact. And it ranges from a high of eighteen percent. So twenty percent is really, I haven't actually never seen a twenty percent. It's actually around eighteen percent being the high, all the way down to about one percent. I'd say the average is usually about ten percent. So these commercial linkage fees never, ever cover the full housing. Non-residential developers are rarely asked to cover the full impact of the housing they create, because they're non-residential developers, they're not residential developers. So a lot of cities will do these commercial linkage fees, and when they do, it's somewhere in the range of one to eighteen, twenty percent of the total impact. So I'm around for questions if there's more that follow.
So Chair Bauckey, that concludes our presentation. We'll save the rest of the time. You want to go now?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Good afternoon, honorable commissioners. My name is Dale Goldsmith. I'm with the AGD Law Firm. We are land use and CEQA counsel to the applicant. I'd like to talk briefly regarding the CEQA approach. As staff stated, the original proposal or the original approach was to use the infill exemption under CEQA Guidelines 15332. However, staff subsequently determined that this category exemption does not apply. Therefore, the city prepared additional analyses that confirm that the project qualifies for the exemption, a statutory exemption, in Public Resources Code Section 21083.3 and CEQA Guidelines Section 15183. CEQA expressly favors streamlining, including relying on programmatic EIRs. This exemption, in this case, is based on the 2011 Program EIR for the city's general plan, as well as the Cabrillo Plaza specific plan EIR. These Program EIRs remain valid today. There's no such thing under CEQA as a stale EIR due to passage of time. Indeed, as the California Supreme Court held in Friends of San Mateo Gardens versus San Mateo Community College District, an approving agency can rely on an old EIR, provided that it has, retains some informational value. And in this case, there's substantial evidence that demonstrates that the two subject Program EIRs do retain such informational value. The exemption is applicable in this case, because the project is consistent with the development density established by the general plan, and the project will not result in project-specific environmental impacts. And as demonstrated in the staff report, the project is consistent with the development density established in the, in the, in the general plan. The general plan EIR covers the assumed build-out under the specific plan, and because the project is consistent with and implements that specific plan, it is also covered by the general plan programmatic EIR. As demonstrated by the city's CEQA document, which is included in your staff report, and is supported by detailed expert technical reports and studies, the project will not result in any project-specific impacts that are significant. All potential project-specific impacts will be reduced to less than significant with compliance with uniformly applied development standards, including conditions of approval and identified regulatory compliance measures. Recent case law, including the appellate court's decision just this month in Hilltop versus County of San Diego, continue to uphold the use of Section 1513, 15183 exemptions under circumstances such as are present in this case. Therefore, the city's approach fully complies with CEQA, and no further CEQA analysis is required. Therefore, we respectfully request that you approve the project today. I and the development team are available for any questions you may have. I would like to reserve the remainder of our time to respond to public comments. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, with that, Ms. Johnson, how much time do they have left on the clock for the record?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. There's three minutes and fourteen seconds left.
Let's note that. Okay, next will be public comment. Do we have any in-person public comments? I do have to note, if there are organized speakers, you can pool your, your three minutes with other folks, but they have to send out, hand it in a slip and noted that they will be pooled, or you can do that when you walk up, but we, we want to make sure that everybody has a opportunity to speak, but if you have an organized presentation and needs more than three minutes, you need to get your time from somebody else. So with that, Ms. Johnson, do we have any public speakers?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. At this time, I do have eleven requests to speak, so I'll go ahead and start with Wallace Pyatt, if you'd like to make your way up to the podium, and we'll have Colton Sanders on deck.
Hello again. My name is Wallace Pyatt. I've been an artist and designer in the funk zone for a very, very long time. I've lived in Santa Barbara for forty-two years. I went to college here and stayed here because of the absolute beauty, the uniqueness, and the small-town feel. We opened our first retail store at 37 East Ortega Street in 1991, and then moved to State Street locations for fifteen years. Fast forward, we opened a store seven years ago in the funk zone. We opened a creative retail store, Love Warren, and an art gallery at 11 Anacapa Street in an old bunker warehouse. All our inventory and my art is created in container land, the location of the proposed hotel. We, as creatives, are a large part of the force in the funk zone. We are a part of the unique group of small, cool coffee shops, restaurants, art galleries, tattoo shops, beer gardens, wineries, and retail shops, as well as antique shops. All these locations were grown organically, through time, all with an artistic, meaningful style. I understand growth and change, but this cookie-cutter monstrosity of a hotel is not within the path of our unique, beautiful Santa Barbara I am very fond of. This huge hotel doesn't fit in our own creative, small funk zone period. It will be the ultimate eyesore. It's too big, it's too common, and it doesn't have an ounce of artistic or any organic feeling that our funk zone exudes. We cannot allow this hotel to set a precedent for our creative area. The path will be one of large, corporate, uncultured, any-street USA mannerism. Pearl Chase, God rest her soul, didn't spend years of work in formulating the understated elegance that Santa Barbara has now to have this travesty happen. What's next? A three-story Starbucks down the street? God, I hope not. Please, City Council, say no to this monstrous development. It's unimaginative, lacks unique aesthetic value, and doesn't fit here in our beloved funk zone we creatives call home. And speaking of homes and housing, we really need housing in Santa Barbara, not a huge conglomerate hotel. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we'll have Colton Sanders, and then on deck, we'll have Doug Fell. You can go ahead and start whatever.
Sorry, I was waiting for the timer to start. Hi, my name is Colton Sanders. I'm a student at UCSB. I've lived in Cal, in Santa Barbara for three years now, and among pretty much all of our, of the city's residents, I am very aware of the housing crisis, and I have a concern about the housing study that was performed. It mentioned that there is a need for eleven new housing units based on the, based on the new worker, based on the new employment that it would create. But I also noticed in there that it equip, it made the housing units equivalent for a one-bedroom studio and a two-bedroom, like, moderate-income housing unit. And I kind, and I'm concerned about that, because isn't the goal to house people, not necessarily to create new units? If, and I don't understand how arbit, like, creating eleven new arbitrary units is supposed to house sixty new workers. I don't know if it's sixty new employees in the region, or what, but after all, I'm not a housing expert, a housing study expert of any means, but that is a concern that I have. And on top of that, I also have a second concern when it comes to the six planned in the hotel. It's prioritized for employees, which I consider to be a good thing, but I am concerned that in case any employees were terminated, if their tenancy would be revoked, if their tenancy would be revoked inside of the hotel. And on top of that, like, what would the eviction window be like in case they were terminated? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have Doug Fell, and after that, we'll have Brittany Zajik.
Chairman and members of the commission, I'm Doug Fell. I am here to support the project, and, but I need to give you a quick background. I was originally a land use attorney who assisted this project back at its very inception. However, I retired, and life is so much better. And, but, so today, I'm speaking purely as a citizen, not an attorney, and not a representative of the project. This project, as conditioned by staff, will create a quality hospital, hotel, consistent with the coastal act. It will further benefit the Wright family, as, as contemplated when the Wright family, pursuant to the Cabrillo specific plan, dedicated private property to the city for the extension of Garden Street and Yan and Ollie. The city of Santa Barbara has had the benefit of this dedication since 1997, but Mr. Wright has not received the benefit of his dedication. This hotel will be part of that benefit, and a reasonable understanding that was formed with the Wright specific plan, or the Garden Street specific plan. When open and operating, this project will benefit the city and by receipt of substantial bed taxes. Now, I understand people wanting to have housing, but housing doesn't happen, and the city can't afford to support it, can't afford to do the straits, can't afford to make it come to be, unless it's got revenue. And this city needs revenue. Where is that revenue? It comes from bed tax. And this hotel will, although not providing housing other than the affordable units, will provide bed taxes and will support the economics of the city. I, I guess my time's over, but I have submitted a letter.
Thank you, Mr. Fell.
Okay, up next, we'll have Brittany Zajik, and then on deck, we'll have Jennifer Bruel.
It's noted that Jennifer Bruel is donating her time to me.
Good. You have six minutes.
Chair Bauckey and members of the planning commission, despite this commission's direction to the developer to engage the community, nothing has changed standing here before you today since last August. Documentation of community outreach by the applicant was a flyer. And here we are again, for the third time, with inefficient reports that have not satisfied our Santa Barbara officials, and a disingenuous attempt for what is a neighborhood-altering hotel project on six acres of land suitable for housing, we're at risk for losing forever. The Garden Street Hotel Project, as it is proposed today, looms over our horizon like an impending storm, threatening to, to disrupt the very fabric that our community, without offering any semblance of return or benefit to this community. There's a weird palpable sense of false urgency to make a decision about what is going to be a hundred-year-long project without proper due diligence and considerations, almost as if they don't have to live with the outcome, but have everything to gain from it. They'll say they'll clean up the shipping container yard, the eyesore, rather. So would housing. And mind you, that shipping container yard we're talking about is full of wildlife and art, and has been home to dozens of local businesses, artists, and fisherpeople, many of which, or many of whom have been there longer than I've been alive. Are the developers paying homage to the fact that those shacks and containers and the people that they are uprooting are the very thing that have put the funk in funk zone, and the reason that they want to capitalize on our neighborhood without offering anything in return? They say they will improve our infrastructure. So will housing. A housing project would be much more adaptable over the next a hundred years to our changing climate, without the need for underground infrastructure to maximize their profits over everything. Imagine if all the energy over the course of this development that was going into attacking the community, a community that stands to gain nothing from this project, as it is proposed today, could be directed towards working with the community. This neighborhood is a testament to the resilience and creativity of its residents. For decades, local businesses and artists have woven the tapestry of our cultural landscape and fusing it with vibrancy of, and character unmatched elsewhere in this city. We need to preserve it. To sacrifice this essence of the altered unchecked development is a disservice to every single Santa Barbara resident, both past and future. We acknowledge the challenges our city faces in this decision, but we refuse to accept this disingenuous attempt that is the project that is proposed today, and for the third time. We reject the notion that progress must come at the expense of our community cohesion and well-being. Instead, we propose a different vision rooted in sustainable growth, local prioritization, and genuine collaboration. Allow me the opportunity to be very clear, that I am not asking for this Los Angeles-based hotel development group to build housing for us. I am asking the elected officials of Santa Barbara to give us, your neighbors, the opportunity to bring housing to this site. Never underestimate the power of a united community, and never underestimate the power of the funk zone community. As stewards of our city's future, we implore you to exercise the discretion your membership on this commission entitles you to, and is celebrated by the communities that elected you. The path forward is clear. The needs of our community have changed radically since both 1983 and 2019, and if we don't prioritize the needs of our community now, we won't get another chance. Embrace alternatives that honor the spirit of the funk zone, provide some community value to this project, and prioritize the needs of your neighbors over the developers' profits. Thank you.
Okay, up next, we'll have Jennifer Bruel, and after that, we'll have Catherine Anderson.
She donated her time to me.
Okay, my mistake. We'll have Catherine Anderson, and then Mary Rose.
And Mary has also donated her time, I believe. Chair Bauckey and, Chair Bauckey and commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Catherine Anderson for the Law Office of Mark Chitillo and Keep the Funk. Under the CEQA exemption pursued under Section 15183, staff analysis of project impacts would need to be performed for those circumstances peculiar and specific to the project, not analyzed as significant events, effects in a prior EIR general community plan, and include the analysis of potentially significant off-site and cumulative impacts not previously studied. All of these instances are present in this case. Hazardous contaminants were not studied under any prior environmental document. Currently, the majority of the project's preliminaries- document. Currently, the majority of the project's preliminary environmental assessments and work plans concern the method of sampling to ensure adequate investigation of how contaminated the site is. They are not final assessment plans. They are not soil management plans or remediation plans. These preliminary investigations, however, do indicate the level of site contamination is such that many of the chemicals and metals present in the soil, soil vapor, and groundwater are above Tier One or even acceptable commercial use levels. The underground parking structure and its excavation will cut into the excent water table, creating a void for groundwater infiltration. The HLS, EHS letter of November 2022 stated that de-watering and long-term maintenance will likely be required due to subterranean parking. The level of contamination of this infiltrating groundwater is such that it could not be discharged on-site, and that storage, treatment, transportation, proper disposal of this produced water would likely be necessary for the life of the project. Although conditioned in the staff report, this project's specific impact was not considered under hydrology and water quality HWQ-1. Even during flood events, like we've seen lately, the tsunami report, these, this is an impact that would need to be mitigated. Further, the EHS letter of November 2022 also states that additional analysis of contamination levels is needed to determine whether a land use covenant restricting the permitted uses of the site would be required, which could preclude construction or occupancy of the project. Exemption from SEQA reviews is not available to a project if cumulative impacts exist. In this instance, potentially significant off-site and cumulative impacts of soil disturbance were not studied, such as enhanced mobilization of these contaminants in soil and groundwater into nearby soils, wetlands, drainages, tidal waters, and nor were off-site or cumulative impacts of the excavation, storage, transportation of these contaminated soils and water to hazardous materials disposal site analyzed. Although the staff report indicates that soil remediation would be part of the project, an essential part of SEQA is that one cannot mitigate a project into an exemption. Staff has relied on a generalized program, EIR, and an outdated specific plan that do not fit the current circumstances on the project site. Without adequate analysis, project implementation represents a very real possibility of significant harmful impacts to people and the environment, and yet new EIR is needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Okay, up next, we'll have Mark Chitillo, and after that, we'll have Gareth Kelly.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I have additional time that was donated by Mary Rose, who's in the audience. Members of the Commission, my name is Mark Chitillo. I'm an attorney representing the Keep the Funk organization. We've submitted a letter which indicates our strident opposition to the project approval as it's currently brought forward to you today. One of the biggest issues is, of course, housing, and the housing problem that our community experiences is from projects like this, that bring in a lot of jobs but provide little or no affordable housing for the workforce employees that are the engine of our local economy, and are part of our, the community that we all want to embrace and allow to live here while they work here. The specific plan included a direct requirement as to what should be studied and how this project had to address its housing impacts. This was part of the specific plan from 1983, and the housing impact study that they have presented doesn't address that requirement. The specific plan required that the city developer, the applicant, developed strategies and programs in order to minimize adverse impacts from the project to the community housing stock. What they came up with was something very different. Different, the housing element itself refers to the need to keep a balance between new jobs and new housing. What they are presenting here is further imbalance, and for that reason, we would request that you deny this project and/or direct it back for additional study. The housing study is based on several assumptions which undermine its adequacy. First of all, they tie the whole thing to a linkage fee ordinance, which we don't have, and it really, the, the whole analysis goes off the rails at that point, saying, well, gosh, we're getting more than 2%, so we're doing better than some other cities. That's not the assessment here. This is Santa Barbara. What we need is a Santa Barbara solution. We cannot just continue the existing problems, but in fact, the assumption that, I think the applicant directed the consultant to look at, is that the existing commuting patterns, where only 30% of our workforce employees actually live in the city, and 70% are commuting. The premise of this study was that we would continue this status quo of 70% of our employees are going to come from outside of the community. That's the wrong approach. We need to increase the amount of affordable housing that's associated with these new job centers so that people can stay and live and work in this community. Further, it doesn't even mean, doesn't even satisfy the status quo because, first of all, while they assumed a unit density of 1.66 worker per housing unit, that six of the housing units are studios, and so we're not going to have two or 1.66 people living in those studios. Those are one-person units. So it just doesn't work. It doesn't fit. And then, they reduced by 50% the amount of affordable housing they were actually going to provide. We need, they, according to their standards, 11 units, and they came up with six. So the adequacy of this study is, is completely flawed, and so for that reason, you need to direct the applicant to come back with a housing study and enough affordable housing to be able to meet the needs to keep this, to minimize the project impacts and to keep it in balance with the community. Turning quickly to SEQA issues, first, there are some flaws associated with the project description. As you heard from Ms. Anderson, this is basi-- the, the project is basically being proposed to be put into a, an area of saturated, contaminated groundwater. It's like trying to put a bowl into a sponge with the underground parking area. The remediation plan will excavate the, we think, we haven't seen it, and this needs to be included in the project description in order for the SEQA analysis to be adequate. They're going to excavate soils and put the, the parking area in there, but the entire region, the area of the project, is also containing earthquake debris, hazardous chemicals, unexploded ordinance potentially, and a whole suite of other hazardous chemicals and problems that, that are going to contaminate this saturated groundwater and will eventually find its way into the parking space. As the Environmental Health Services said, there needs to be, there will need to be a continu-- a continuous program, there's likely to need to be a continuous program for de-watering the groundwater that is going to be displaced by this, this project. And then we heard, of course, well, we, and provided to a previous, at the previous hearing, and Commissioner Barnwell, if you look back at the sea level rise analysis that we had Dave Ravel perform for us, the sea level analysis, sea level rise analysis, and the impact from freshwater, the fluvial impact from flooding, from elevated groundwater, and all this rain that we're so blessed to have, is going to further impact the ability of this site to stay de-watered, and we are concerned that there's going to be significant impact, and they need to be addressed in the environmental document. It was, the, the SEQA expert indicated that because it's all compliant with this, with the specific plan and the densities and everything, there's no basis for environmental review. But in fact, what they're proposing is more than what's provided for in the specific plan. Specific plan allowed 250 rooms, but they're adding the six affordable housing. Now, we, we need the housing, and we want more housing, but you got to back out some of the rooms. You can't have your cake and eat it too. There's no cumulative impact analysis, and indeed, when there are cumulative or off-site impacts, then the exemption that the applicant is proposing is no longer available. The findings that you're required to make include findings of SEQA adequacy and compliance with the specific and general plans. We, we think that those are the basis for you to deny this project, direct the applicant to come back with more housing that suits our community's needs. Thank you very much.
Up next, we'll have Gareth Kelly, and then on deck, we'll have Trish Allen.
Good afternoon, Chair Bauckey and members of the Planning Commission. I stand before this commission today with a somber sense of déjà vu. My last visit to this body was to strongly oppose the development of yet another unwanted hotel here in Santa Barbara at the expense of a longstanding family business representative of a peace of heart and soul of this community. And even though we appealed that ethically questionable decision made by this commission to the City Council, it is clear little has changed, and that the voices of this community are again being drowned out by the gluttonous, profit-driven, developer-all-costs mentality. And so I find myself here yet again, opposing yet another hotel our community simply does not need, does not want, and a project that threatens to drive a stake through the beating heart of an area we know and love as the Funk Zone. This 250-room monstrosity, or rather, an opulent exercise in greedy gentrification, as it should be called, that does not even welcome locals through its doors, is the antithesis of sound community planning, a standard you, the planning commissioners of this city, are tasked with upholding. While this project, while the project on East Ortega is different from this project on Garden Street, one thing is abundantly clear. They are both strongly and vociferously opposed by those of us in the community you are supposed to not just listen to, but to hear. I have no doubt some of you will wax lyrical about how your hands are tied, and how we should blame those above you on City Council who will say, who you will say have failed to empower you, that you cannot ignore the ticks of many procedural boxes that this project may very well have. City staff cannot make brave recommendations. They are constrained by the rules and regulations laid out to them, all part of a system that clearly favors developers, a system so heavily influenced by the wealthy developers themselves that it is corrupt to its core and not fit for purpose. But I put it to you, you have the power. Right here today, you can choose what to do, what is moral, what's right, and what's ethical, and what is in the best interests of this community and the city. Simply agreeing with city staff and bending over to accommodate the insatiable wishes of yet another affluent developer while the community at large screams at you, how strongly they oppose this project is not sound community planning, nor is it morally correct. You can tell this city and the power brokers within this building that right here today, you will no longer approve a hotel project such as this one, or any other project like this that will come before you until this system is changed to be more fair, more equitable, and more inclusive, and one that actually listens to and acts on the concerns and views of the community and those within it most effective. Stop hiding behind the process. Stop feigning empathy and sympathy. Be bold, be brave, and have the conviction to say enough is enough. Do the right thing and halt the destruction of what makes the Funk Zone funky. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we'll have Trish Allen, and then on deck, we'll have Noah Boland.
Good afternoon, Chair Bauckey and Commissioners. My name is Trish Allen. I am here, I was asked by the property owners, the Wright family, to make public comment on their behalf. They asked me to go through a little bit of background. You've heard it. I'm going to go through some points that they'd like me to make today. And actually, it was donated time by both Tony Bordelazzo and Jean Bordelazzo, who are here in the chambers, along with the rest of the family. As you know, development on this site is regulated by specific plan two. The Cabrillo Plaza specific plan, this was approved by City Council in 1983. The council found the plan to be consistent with both the land use plan of the local coastal plan and the California Coastal Act. When it was approved, the specific plan required that certain public improvements be undertaken at the time that development was initiated in the specific plan. However, in this case, the extension of Garden Street from Yananali to Cabrillo Boulevard, and the extension of Yananali Street across its terminus with Garden Street to the Laguna Channel were pursued. This happened in advance of the development occurring in the specific plan. The city and the former redevelopment agency desire to complete these very important public improvements, and for this reason, the Wright family commenced negotiations with the city, which included the land dedication necessary to extend these streets that we've been talking about. And as Mr. Colonel mentioned, that total area of the land dedication was over two acres, 2.275, to be specific. In order to effectuate the construction of these improvements, in 1997, the city and the land owners entered into Owners Participation Agreement, the OPA. The owner and the city agreed to cooperate on the Garden Street extension, and as summarized in a 1996 letter from the city's Community Development Director, the Garden Street extension will be the first development component implementing the specific plan, and this will ultimately lead to phased development of the various specific plan areas. In conjunction with the city's redevelopment agency, the city completed the construction of the Garden Street extension, and the roadway was opened for public use in July of 1998. This, this project, this first phase of the specific plan, provided critically needed extension of Garden Street from Yananali to Cabrillo. In 98, 1998, the City Council accepted the work as complete, and the project completion was facilitated and expedited because of the Wright's willingness to cooperate with the city and agency officials, and as others have stated, we have all realized the benefit to the community for about 25 years. By completing these improvements in a cooperative manner, the city and the community, and community have further benefited from being able to complete Chase Palm Park expansion, in addition to providing a major boulevard to the waterfront, including bikeways and sidewalks. And just as I'm here in the hearing room, listening to other folks coming forward and making their impassioned public comment, we all agree, housing, we, we're all on board with that. And I have to say, as a, as a longtime planner in the city of Santa Barbara, the city made a huge change in how development was processed in the 80s. It was called Measure E, went to the voters. The voters said, we have to do something about the jobs, housing imbalance in our community. And, and an ordinance was passed. Today, we call it the Non-Residential Growth Management Ordinance, and that is the mechanism, a planning mechanism, to regulate non-residential development, to balance non-residential with residential. As Mr. Fell stated so eloquently, we need economic development, we need commercial development, to provide the funds for our infrastructure, where the, the housing projects cannot do that. So this is a comprehensive look at our development, our community. Yes, we want housing. Should it be on this site? That, that's up to you today. I, I'm here on behalf of the Wrights to ask you to please take forward the, the staff recommendation and approve this project, move it forward. It was a commitment from folks that, City Council and on previous planning commissions, and, and we are here today to carry, to ask you to carry that forward. The Wrights have been pursuing this for many years. They marketed this property in 2015 for lease. They entered into agreement with a different developer in 2018. He started processing this application. The pandemic happened. That posed problems for pretty much everybody. And so at that time, Dauntless came in and carried forward this development application, and they've been at it for, for years. I want to say that I don't know who's here in terms of the tenancy, but the tenants have been absolutely made aware of this pending development, this recent development since 2015. But there have been other projects that have been, as you know, from the, the background in the staff report, that have been pursued by this family. Again, our request today is for the commission to carry out staff's recommendation to approve this project, making the findings, and in recognition of this long-anticipated development. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we'll have Noah Boland, and on deck, we'll have Jordan Naum.
Chair Bauckey, members of the Commission, my name is Noah Boland, and I'm truly honored to speak to you on behalf of the Local Citizens Action Group, Heal the Ocean. So I've been keeping a close eye on a lot of the new proposed developments in the low-lying flood zones of Santa Barbara, particularly keeping the long-term impacts of sea level rise in mind. 101 Garden Street is a unique site, mainly because of its complex environmental complications. Heal the Ocean has been following this site for over 20 years because we know that the soil is contaminated. We have been very optimistic about developments here in the past because we know that a new project will require at least some level of soil remediation. Unfortunately, our environmental concerns with this project are far too great for us to support it. In particular, our main issue is the underground parking garage. Representatives of this project have told us that this project cannot be financially feasible without this underground parking garage, so this project must be denied or must be sent for further environmental review. Developing an underground parking garage will greatly increase the already serious flooding risks. As sea level rise and climate change continues, these risks will increase, and this will soon require costly floodproofing and de-watering operations that might not even be effective. soon require costly floodproofing and dewatering operations that might not even be effective. I found it interesting earlier that Mr. Cornell mentioned the elevated entrances of this area, and he recognized that these entrances would not necessarily even be effective in the events of extraordinary flooding events, which he agreed will come. Not to mention that these elevated entrances do not even address the hydrostatic pressure that could occur from the rising groundwater table as a result of sea level rise. And although this project requires soil remediation, it is important to remember that volatile organic compounds and other groundwater contaminants are highly mobile. A sea level rise pushes the already close-to-the-surface water table even further up, the distance between the lowest floor of the building and the water table will decrease until there is a clear pathway for harmful pollutants from elsewhere to enter the building. And I know from spending a lot of time looking at proposed developments in this area that there is a lot of contaminated soil nearby. So with these known risks to human health, why then would the developers propose to dig even further toward the water table? In a previous meeting, Commissioner Wiscom said that this discussion is really about environmental review, and we agree. With the development of an underground parking garage, and the flooding risks to the structural integrity of the building, as well as the property, along with the human health risks, this is all far too great for us to support it. This project requires further environmental review to better address the concerns that I've listed in my comment, or it should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we'll have Jordan Naum, and after that, we'll have Bob Lederer.
My name is Jordan Naum. I am a born and raised local. I am raising my children here, and I want to be able to live here and afford living here for as long as possible. At the end of last year, the city shut down our small Airbnb venture. These were small bedrooms and spare bedrooms in our home. My husband and I shared our own bedroom with our four-year-old to compensate and to make space for guests and income. We were forced to shut down operations last year, at the end of the year, and we could no longer afford mortgage because these bedrooms were not an option for long-term renters. We are now trying to sell our home, and we had to move into a single-family rental as we prepare for the arrival of our second child. I was told that this was because the city was protecting housing for locals. They took away my source of income and made me unable to pay for mortgage in this expensive town, and forced my family to take up housing that could have otherwise been used for another local family, all of this in the name of making housing more accessible. Tell me again, why do we need 250 new hotel rooms? My rented guest room was too threatening to the housing crisis, and somehow this mega-build is going to be a different story? This is hypocrisy. The rights of homeowners to use their extra bedrooms for additional income is an argument for another town. The hotel lobbyists have done an excellent job painting locals just trying to get by as the evil bad guys in this scenario, and the town should hear the true story about how the greed of our city officials have made determinations in favor of corporations instead of the economic survival of their constituents. But for now, I would just ask that the city uphold their commitment that ran me out of my house, to please focus on affordable housing, and don't take up this square footage with another massive hotel. We need more housing. We don't need 250 new hotel rooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Bob Lederer.
Is he May Ludwig?
Maybe, yes, Bob Ludwig.
Excuse me? Sorry. Chair Bauckey, and welcome, Commissioner Barnwell. It's great to see you, and thank you, Mayor Lodge, and the rest of you for your service. I first stood here, and you are going to get tired of hearing me this week say that, I first stood here in 1977. So I've been paying attention, and it's been part of my career, to enjoy working with staff, and with you, and the City Council. And I have appreciated and now miss the giant shoulders on which all of us in this room stand. And those are the people who had vision, courage, and took risks for all of the rest of us, centuries if not decades ago. And I'm grateful for that, and I am grateful for people who keep their word, and I'm grateful for the city that has gone to great pains over, at least my career, since the 70s, with development agreements and other specific plan documents to create a much better Santa Barbara. I have on my wall, in my office, an aerial photograph of Santa Barbara from 1981. And this whole waterfront was a much different place. There was no funk zone. The funk zone was underwater. Brian, you and I know that from visiting there in rowboats in the March Miracle from the early 90s. And it was because of commercial development that was thoughtfully done in partnership with Public Works for the city of Santa Barbara that made the funk zone possible, and all of the development of the waterfront. And the Wright family were major contributors to that solution. And the Wright family gave their side of the bargain that makes the funk zone even possible. And this was the bargain they made. And the hotel in front of you, I support because I do know that it's those dollars that flow into the city's revenue that make it possible for them to take partnership roles with private development and create a better Santa Barbara. Thank you, each one of you, for your service. Thank you.
At this time, I don't have any other speaker slips, and I'm not seeing any movement, so I'll go ahead and move to virtual public comment. I do see one hand raised for Citizens Planning, so I'm going to go ahead and give you the permission to speak, and you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Okay, good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, planning commissioners, my name is Morrell Brooks. I'm speaking on behalf of Citizens Planning Association. We have submitted comments earlier in this process. Citizens Planning Association is quite familiar with this site. When CPA was founded in 1960, that site was an industrial site, which was quietly creating significant contamination. We feel that the current project should not be given an exemption under CEQA. In the past two years, the city has been subjected to severe flooding because of sea level rise and heavier-than-normal rainfall. We are in a different world than that of 50 years ago, and a new EIR should show this. Actually, I don't think we need a study. Our eyes and our experiences with flooded streets and homes in the last two years certainly prove we are living in a different world. We agree with other groups that have pointed out the risks of using a subterranean parking facility in this flood-prone location. Now, the housing element requires emphasis on affordable housing over tourist-related development. We are concerned that the hotel with over 100 extended stay hotel rooms will only exacerbate the need for low-income workers, which will have to cater to these high-income temporary residents, and hence, this worsens our current housing crisis. We see little community benefit with the current proposal. It's too big, and it's too private, due to no public access of its amenities. CPA feels that this proposed project is inconsistent with the funk zone residential and commercial area. So in closing, I'd like to say that CPA would ask that the 250-room, may perhaps future private island hotel be denied, and that a more compatible project with more community benefit be considered. Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have Steve Johnson, and then after that, we'll have Marjan Abubu.
I hope you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My concern is with subgrade parking. This is a serious issue. Land Use Policy 5.1-35 calls for restricting basements in flood zones. Please note, the governing standard for this project is ACE 24, not FEMA. I was in error at the August 4th meeting when I implied that FEMA was the governing document, it's ACE 24. ACE 24 classifies hotels as residential. It differs from FEMA in that regard. ACE 24 classifies hotels as residential. Both FEMA and ACE 24 do not allow residential above subgrade parking in a flood zone. I want to repeat that. ACE 24 does not allow residential above subgrade parking in a flood zone. And if the applicant expert says otherwise, they have a serious difficulty with facts. Why is residential not allowed above subgrade parking in a flood zone? Why? Because it is dangerous. However, ACE 24 includes a loophole. Subgrade parking is allowed for mixed-use projects. Now, when the applicant presented the project, nowhere did they use the word "mixed-use." Look on their plans, you will not see "mixed-use" anywhere on their plans, nor was the word "mixed-use" shown anywhere in the staff report in the previous PC review. Ah, but in this PC review, the staff report does include some language about mixed-use. What makes a mostly residential project mixed-use? A significant percentage must be non-residential. A developer cannot simply add a Coke machine to a hotel and claim it to be mixed-use and build a dangerous project. At least 25% must be non-residential. The 25% requirement is recently, it was only adopted in the Code of Federal Regulations in 2022. By the way, 25% of what? That is the critical question. At least 25% of the project's total floor area within the building must be non-residential. Staff report doesn't provide any statistics to confirm whether or not that is the case, but I assure you, 25% is only met if the parking area, the subgrade parking area, is included in the calculation. But the subgrade parking area is not within the building. Look at the cover sheet of the plans, they show the parking area as different. Sounds like I'm about out of time?
Yes, you are.
I would just ask you to seriously consider this concern.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Marjan Abubu.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Bauckey and Honorable Planning Commissioners. My name is Marjan Abubu, UCSB alum and attorney with the law firm Los Ojai. I'm commenting on behalf of the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER for short, its members live, work, and recreate in and around the city of Santa Barbara. SAFER and other community members successfully advocated against the project from proceeding under a Class 32 categorical exemption last August, and is now requesting that the commission deny the CEQA exemption under Section 15183 for similar reasons. We submitted comments earlier this week and maintain that further environmental review under CEQA must be prepared. City now relies on the 15183 exemption, but after reviewing the documents, SAFER finds that the 2011 General Plan EIR, 1983 Specific Plan EIR, and all underlying documents in which this project relies on preclude such use of an exemption. For example, this project is primarily a hotel development with a housing component. Under the General Plan EIR, such hotel proposal would not have been permitted when the General Plan EIR was first approved under the Related Zoning Code. Subsequently, the housing component of the hotel project would not have been permitted when the 1983 Specific Plan EIR was approved. As such, there are clear inconsistencies between the project, as before the commission today, and the underlying program EIR in which the exemption relies on. The applicant's counsel admits that the General Plan EIR is a program EIR. To the extent that the general plan program, or to the extent that it's a program EIR, the project does not adequately analyze the specific impacts as required under 15183. SAFER highlighted these key issues in the project last year, and those impacts still apply, given how the project design has not been altered. Previously raised issues related to air quality, hazards, biological, and wildlife impacts from back in August are not only peculiar to the project site, but the staff report fails to comprehensively review the off-site and cumulative impacts that directly stem from this project as well, which is required to be analyzed under 15183. SAFER maintains our position to supplement the record with additional findings, but we reiterate the substantial evidence already on the record and as expressed by community members, demonstrating the clear inconsistencies with the underlying General Plan EIR and related zoning, as well as the on- and off-site, as well as cumulative impacts that are peculiar to the project and should foreclose any use of a CEQA exemption. As such, SAFER respectfully requests the commission to direct planning staff to prepare either an MND or an EIR to analyze the project's impacts, but definitely not under the 15183 exemption. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I don't see any other hands raised, but we did receive 34 written correspondence, which were distributed to the commission prior to the meeting. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Bauckey.
Okay, thank you. First off, Commissioners, are you ready to go forward, or you want to take a break before we get into... Break, or no break? Question? I'm getting no... Okay, so we'll just go on. Okay. So we don't want you dancing in your pants. Okay. Next, we'll start with commission questions, the applicant staff, or whoever you want to direct your questions. Who would like to go first? Okay, we've got a bunch of names on the screen. Commissioner Lodge, your name hit the screen first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The question for Ms. Kennedy, did I understand you correctly to say that the 11 units determination was based on all three parcels of the Wright project, of the Wright property?
No, so this project in Area A consists of the merger of six lots total. But I did say, maybe referring to this, the seven that were listed as housing demand in the EIR covered all of the specific plan areas.
Oh, I see, okay. I misunderstood, thank you. That's my only question.
Okay, Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, if this particular piece of property within the specific plan were to be developed as housing units, is it correct that there would be no mandate that could require them to be affordable, and that they would all be market-rate units?
Commissioner Barnwell, that there wouldn't be no mandate, correct? I mean, they could come forward with a market-rate housing project.
And comply with all the code if they came forward with market-rate housing?
It would be the variable density allowances.
And the number is 85, according to...
Yeah, I haven't confirmed that, but I believe, if I recall, 85 or 90, I think, was probably the maximum.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, Commissioner DeLucio.
Boy, those are easy questions. Okay, Ms. Kennedy, so basically to piggyback on what you're saying, is it true, though, that besides 85 units, they could do bonus, go through the bonus density product, project, density bonus avenue and get a lot more units out of there?
That's correct.
Okay, so there could be more than 85 units. I have some questions, and actually, I sent you an email. Ms. Kennedy, can you just call out, now since they're not going to, we're not requiring them to do a mitigated deck in any way here, we're giving them an exemption, but if, but within the conditions of approval, can you call out, there are things they need to do environmentally, and those are in the conditions of approval, short of not having a monitoring program, since it would, it's exempt from CEQA, where, can you tell, point out to us what conditions involve environmental?
I'd like to defer to Julia Pujol for that question.
Commissioner, Chair Bauckey and Commissioner DeLucio, staff did not go through the exercise preparing a mitigation monitoring plan because of this type of process that we're using. Conditions of approval include a lot of standard conditions, which are backed by policy. And so, those types of conditions of approval, if we were to go through an MND or EIR process, they might show up in a MMRP. Is that...
But, yeah, but however, since we're not going that avenue, obviously, there's some cleanup that needs to be done on the site, so how are we conditioning that and putting a program in place in order to monitor it, lack of it not being in a, in a neck deck with a monitoring program?
Yes. Commissioner DeLucio, there is a condition of approval to repair a remediation action plan, and that would be completed prior to the building permit stage, and it includes soil remediation, groundwater remediation, and a soil vapor barrier, and a worker and public safety plan, and that would all be overseen with county environmental health services. And county environmental health services are the regulatory oversight agency for soil and groundwater contamination cleanup, and staff rely on them to let us know when they are brought up to regulatory standards.
Okay, thank you. Now, I have a question in regards to the housing study that was done. Either you or the applicant can help me understand it a little better. I understand we don't have a commercial linkage, linkage fee in this, in this, in this particular city. How did we come to the 11 units before we applied a discount factor based, based on the commercial linkage fee? Can somebody explain that to me? Because we're only putting, we're only recommending six at this time, and I think initially there were 11?
11 was the calculation of the total housing demand created by the project. That's how we came up with 11, using a series of calculations that are typical for a commercial linkage fee. Since that's the typical standard for evaluating the impact of a, of a non-residential project on the demand for housing, it's a pretty ubiquitous and widespread methodology. That methodology came up with 11 units in the city of Santa Barbara.
Was 11 before you applied a commercial linkage fee to it?
Well, I didn't apply a commercial leakage fee to this study.
You applied to the 11 to get down to six.
Okay, to get down to six, I didn't come up with six. That was, that was the applicant's proposal, voluntary proposal. I had nothing to do with that number. I just calculated the 11, and I compared it to the six, which is what they're providing.
And then they came with a 50% factor, basically.
That's correct.
But, but the 11 was, before you talked about commercial linkage fee, was that, the 11 arrived from that?
That's correct. Yeah, just forget about the fee, just calculating what the number of units would be created or demanded as a result of this project was 11.
Based on a study?
Based on the study that we conducted, yes.
Right, before you came up with the formula to discount, because we don't have a
That's correct.
fee in the city, so I guess I have a, you know, that's why I'm asking that question. So if there's no way to discount it with a fee, it would be 11, based on the study?
That, well, I mean, there's no fee, so I just generated the man. I don't, I didn't, I'm not...
No instance, so 11 would be the number?
Yes, of housing units, yes.
Of housing that would be needed, based on the, but, and I didn't see in the study any strategies or programs called out, because that was, I thought, was what the study, besides coming up with a number, it was about coming up with strategies and programs that was called out in the specific plan in 84, you know?
Yeah, well, I just came up with the number. I assumed that the strategy would be the provision of six units, but that, I'll let the applicant speak to this strategy.
Okay. So the, the program is the onsite affordable housing, right, the six units? So I think what he was trying to say is he basically had case studies from Goleta up and down the coast that have commercial leakage fees that use this math, and based on that, we're providing, you know, 55 to 60%, and most cities are 1 to 18%, so...
But we don't have a fee in the city?
No, no, it's just a case study. We're kind of operating in a black box, so we're trying to figure it out.
Yeah, and I'm familiar with the fee, because I'm from West Hollywood, and actually, the fee is the same as Goleta, actually, and Goleta has the same, had the same city attorney as West Hollywood.
Yeah. But so our program to put in place, kind of what, what the specific plan asked was the six onsite.
I guess I have a hard time, you initially came with six.
Yep.
We asked you to do a study to rationalize how you came up with six, and then I, now in my mind, I'm fixated on a number of 11.
Sure.
So that's where I'm, so I don't know how you could discount it down from 11 to six, based that we don't have a fee.
It's, it's based on kind of case studies around coastal California, where they usually have 2 to 20%, and we've got 55 to 60%.
Yeah, but we don't have that in the city.
Fair.
Thank you.
That's fair.
One thing, commissioners, to keep in mind, once again, Dale Goldsmith, is that the cities that do have commercial linkage fees, they just throw dollars at the problem. It doesn't always translate into actual housing. Keep in mind that there will actually be housing built concurrently with the project, and it'll come online exactly at the same time as the project, and that, I think, is a reason to consider that as a very effective strategy, and indeed, perhaps more effective than throwing money at the problem.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the fee, but we don't have it in the city.
No, I understand.
So I have another question, actually, this gentleman, one of the speakers, who actually brought up a really good point, about when these are rented to the employees, if an employee, what is the contract of employee, it doesn't work out, and the employee leaves or is terminated, do they need to leave the affordable housing?
Well, it is an excellent question, and thank you for asking. I was hoping I'd have a rebuttal to address that issue, but that's okay. I'm getting it now. The, under state fair housing law, you cannot restrict the units entirely to employees. They can be prioritized, and indeed, that's what will be happening here, but that means if somebody gets terminated or decides to leave, that doesn't mean that they will be evicted.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Okay, next, Commissioner Whiskam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions. I wanted to understand, the project has nine extra parking spaces, and it says that can be attributed to either 2,200, 2,250 square feet of commercial floor area, or seating areas of one space per three seats, whichever is greater, that can be open to the public. And in the staff report, it says the applicant proposes the market and meeting rooms as open to the public, but the letter from the applicant says many hotel amenities will now be open to the public, so I'm trying to understand which it is, because that came up at the last meeting, what is going to be open to the public? So can someone answer that question and, and also deal with this looks like restriction? Based on the nine parking spaces? Because it said, if you, if you open up more things to the public, you're going to need more parking spaces.
Yeah, we, we definitely won't be an island within, without allowing, you know, the, the community in. I think what, what this stems from is, at our first planning commission, they said, can you open up the restaurant to the public?
Right.
And they said, you know, based on AB 2037, the one, the transit one, you don't have to park it, right? So we've got a restaurant, and with restaurants and retail, it, there's a significant amount of parking requirement, as it stated, so we actually, after that planning commission, we went back and they said, hey, you don't need to park it, just open it up to the public.
Okay.
So we went down, we redesigned it, and then we got back into the, the planning department. They said, oh, wait, hotels are exempt. You actually do have to park the restaurant if you're going to open it up to the public. So it's not, it's not a requirement where we're like, hey, we don't want any outsiders in. We do. I mean, that's, that's the kind of hospitality in a nutshell, right? So I think it came down to the functionality around parking, right? So the nine extra spaces is what we were providing before, and so we had to allocate those parking spaces to square footage, and so we said, hey, what could be a benefit, right? There's the marketplace and the meeting, the food, the food and beverage was just, it would cause probably another layer of parking structure underneath in order for us to accommodate that on paper.
Okay, so the restaurant won't be open to the public, that, that's, that's what you're saying? Okay.
On paper, yes.
Unless, unless you were to do another parking demand study and increase the parking spaces?
Significantly, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. And Mr. Gilbert, stay here, please, because I can ask you a couple more questions. We don't have a commercial linkage fee, but we do have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that's come into existence since you came in August, and it's been fully approved by city council. It's, and we do have a dedicated source of funds that goes into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. At one point during one of our meetings, we asked you if you might be willing to make a contribution to affordable housing in the city, and I think your answer was, yes, you would consider that. Am I putting words in your mouth? And, and what is your position on that now?
Yeah, I think at the time, we basically, there was a bit of a, a black box of what the analysis looked like. I think that was at our first planning commission. We were told to do a housing study to see if our, you know, if we could put stuff onsite. We did. So concurrently, we talked about the housing fund, and it wasn't established at that time. I think, look, for us, I, I think if we can move past that this isn't a housing project, it was never allocated in the housing element study, there was specific sites. If we can move past that and understand the value of what we're providing onsite with the six affordable units, I think there's a conversation to be had. I think our frustration is just that we just keep getting dragged down this, this road. If there's a solution, we, we will come up with something alongside.
So are you saying that you might consider making a contribution, in addition to the six units, that you might consider making a contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
I think if we can, if we can know that there's a decision made today, we're absolutely open to it.
Okay, that's great. Okay. And then my next question for you, thank you for that, is local art.
Yep.
We talked about that, I think, at one of the hearings, too, and have you identified spaces where we have a lot of artists in the funk zone? Have you identified spaces that you're willing to?
All of the interior. I, I think, I think part of what people say about the design of this hotel, I think hopefully everyone can understand the limitations we have, right? There's, in the, in the Cabrillo-specific plan, there is an aesthetic that we have to meet. It's written in law, right? So whether or not people like it, or it's there, it fits in, it is what it is. The condominiums across the street look exactly like ours will look, right? And it was, it was something that has to be dealt with. Interior is, is on the table, and we want to. I mean, I know everyone doesn't think so, but we actually do want to try to be a part of the community. I think the interior is completely on the table. It's hard for us to look past that and, and get that. We will absolutely be at the table and talk to all of those people, but when we're sitting here, wondering whether or not we actually have a hotel project, it's hard to get in those weeds. But yes, you're absolutely right. Everything inside the hotel is fair game.
Okay, so, so you're on the record as saying that you will support local art and, and maybe make some projects on the interior of the building?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, great. And I think that is the end of my questions for you. Thank you so much. And then I just want to go to one question for Ms. Ostringer. Ms. Ostringer, my understanding is, in Section 8 of the administration of the specific plan, it states that all references herein to ordinances are to ordinances as currently written unless expressly provided to the contrary, to the extent legally permitted in the event of any conflict between the specific plan or these conditions, the general, or these conditions, comma, the general plan and ordinances and policies of the city of Santa Barbara, the specific plan or conditions shall prevail. And generally, that's, you know, there might be some conflicts, but that's generally, the specific plan will take precedence. Is that correct?
If there is a conflict, the specific plan prevails unless there's a legal reason why it couldn't.
Great.
Take regard, a charter provision.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Okay, next is Commissioner Werlow, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I have a number of questions. First, I'm going to start with some questions for staff regarding CEQA. So in public comment from SAFER, it is noted that per CEQA, although relevant mitigation measures identified in the General Plan or Community Plan EIR may render an onsite or cumulative impact of a project less than significant, the lead agency would still need to evaluate those impacts in mitigated negative declaration or EIR. Yet we have not received a negative declaration, nor has a project EIR been completed. Can you please explain the rationale for this?
Vice Chair Werlow, I, just to make sure I understand your question, are you asking why staff are recommending 15183 instead of a negative declaration process?
Yes.
Staff considered a lot of options. The directive for the CEQA guidelines is to review an exemption, and if a project qualifies for an exemption, to pursue that prior to going through a negative declaration process or a EIR process. And we found that for this project, they qualified for 15183 because they are consistent with the densities established in the general plan, and because they are consistent with the general plan EIR. During the planning application review process for all planning applications, we review for streamlining options, and we don't differentiate between hotel project or a different type of project. And so if there is a project that meets the criteria for an exemption, we will recommend that first.
Thank you for answering my question. You brought up one point that I'd like to ask further clarification on. The basis of this is steeped on the 2011 General Plan and the Program EIR that was done. In one of the public comments, it was mentioned that the zoning at the, during 2011 would have prohibited this type of use. Is that accurate?
Commissioner Werlow, not to my knowledge, but perhaps, Ms. Kennedy?
No, it's not correct.
Okay, thank you. I have a question regarding the previous exemption that we discussed. If this commission had improved staff's recommendation of the previous CEQA exemption, what type of liability would the city have faced for moving forward with an inaccurate CEQA exemption?
Commissioner Werlow, staff were previously under the impression that when less sites were closed, that they were no longer listed on the Cortezia list. In my research, there are other agencies that had interpreted the, the code that way. However, researching into case law and working with legal, we found that it's more conservative to assume that sites remain on the Cortezia list indefinitely.
Chair Bauckey, Vice Chair Werlow. So it would be the, it's the same standard, it would be the challenge through a writ of mandate in the court, so the same way any CEQA decision would be challenged, this, this decision could be challenged the same way.
Okay, thank you. In the staff report, it notes, staff reviewed the project for consistency with the 2011 General Plan EIR, evaluated the project for effects peculiar to this site. Can you summarize the analysis that staff did to come to the conclusion regarding peculiar effects of this site?
Commissioner Werlow, we completed an environmental checklist, and the environmental checklist is a checklist that was developed to go through each CEQA resource and also to show when a project is consistent with the 2011 EIR. And so that checklist is attached in your staff packet, and includes all the CEQA resources, and those, that analysis is supported by technical documents that were prepared by the applicant team and requested from city staff during the application review process. Would you like me to go through particular resources?
Are there, so from that overall analysis, it was found that there are not peculiar that would make this exemption not make, not qualify? Because we received a lot of public comment saying the opposite.
I understand. Peculiar means that, that it's a site-specific impact that is not necessarily addressed by standard conditions of approval. And through the technical studies, through analysis, we found that project impacts could be addressed by standard conditions, and that's previously why we had recommended the infill exemption. And so the effects peculiar, for example, contamination was brought up a lot. The contamination issues for the site are not unique to this site. They're, they're regional, and the steps that we are taking to make sure that those issues are mediated is a process that we've done for other projects. And also add that the 15183 process is a process that we commonly use for many projects, for planning commission projects and for design board projects.
Okay. Can you describe how staff determined that there would be less than significant off-site and cumulative impacts from this project? Obviously, we received a lot of public comment that, you know, when, when reading through this, is pretty concerning, and it makes us nervous, and I think, you know, the overall purpose of CEQA is to really provide transparency to the public on what are the potential impacts? How could this impact our environment, our air quality? And so just want to understand better how you determined that.
Commissioner Werlow, for, for cumulative indirect impacts, there's two Program EIRs, you know, the General Plan EIR and the Specific Plan EIR. The General Plan EIR does include a hazardous materials section that evaluates contamination on a more programmatic level.
On a more programmatic level?
Yes.
Not on a site-specific level?
Yes, and so... Yes. And so essentially, a site is not meant to remediate the entire city's contamination issues. And so a program-level document does contain cumulative analysis that would serve the purpose of allowing the project to tear off of that.
Okay, so the idea is that the cumulative impacts are not significant enough, and therefore you're going to move forward with the exemption as it is? Or that they're like citywide, and that's why it was captured in the program EIR in 2012, 2011? Okay. I appreciate that. I'm going to move to questions regarding housing now. I do really appreciate your working with me through explaining CEQA and all the specifics of this. Obviously, there's just been a lot of other information provided, so just trying to better understand where the city came to on this. Okay, housing. Mr. Gilbert, or, or, yes, thank you. So the commission requested that this project really consider onsite housing as one of, one program to mitigate the impact of this project on our overall housing crisis. Your housing study purports that you will provide six units, which would address 54% of the overall demand, as you have calculated the overall demand to be 11. But understanding this calculation is based on only offsetting the 30% of projected local workers that already live here, as opposed to the 70% of, of workers that apparently would be commuting in, which is what we're trying to avoid. Would you be open to revising your methodology to address the 70%, meaning 35, or 36, apologies, multiplied by 70% as opposed to 30%, which would result in the overall demand being 25 units?
I just followed the methodology that reflected in most of these types of studies, because very few projects, no, no city am I aware of will require 100% using, take, not accounting for the fact that many workers do not live in the city. So it's a pretty standard approach. Now, if you want to do that methodology, it's pretty easy mathematically to do that calculation. You just take my number, and you've actually did it yourself. So that's a methodological choice. It's more of a policy consideration than an analytical one. I just followed this, I'm just using the, essentially, the standard way in which these programs are usually evaluated, commercial linkage fees are usually evaluated. And that's what I, I presented. So we do, most, again, most of our clients are public sector clients. We do, we do commercial linkage fees all up and down California, and this is the methodology in which we typically standard. Because, but just, the reality is that not all residents, not all workers live in the city. It's just the reality that happens. I, it's, it's a historical fact that in Santa Barbara, if every developer was required to build housing as part of their project, that might, that 30% wouldn't be different. You've never imposed that requirement on development before, and few cities do. Because their non-residential developers don't usually build residential projects, and that's basically why. So, and requiring them to do that would probably stop a lot of non-residential development in its tracks. And so cities, therefore, come up with a commercial linkage fee to mitigate that fact. And that's how we got to where we are. So that's how cities use this methodology. And when they do that, they don't, they rarely, if ever, never in fact, impose 100% of the cost. Because to do that would, again, stop all development in its tracks, non-residence, just period. That's how it would work. Because that's going to be about $300 a square foot, which is about, you know, that's pretty much ends your project, right? So if you impose a $300, $300 a square foot cost on new development, you're not going to have any new development. So that's essentially how we get to where we are. Where most cities generally charge somewhere in the range of 1 to 20 being the high end. And I've never seen anybody go beyond that. I don't think, I'm not even aware of any cities that require developers to build residential as part of their project. I don't know of any cities that do that. So.
Okay, I appreciate that answer. I do think that my question is probably more geared towards Mr. Gilbert. So I definitely understand what you're saying in regards to, you know, the numbers that you guys used was for the 30%, that's the standard. I think that as hearing from the community and as detailed in the EIR from 1983, the specific consideration around housing, combined with the fact that the specific plan additionally notes the importance of addressing housing, combined with the fact that we have an epic housing crisis going on right now, implores me to want to see if there's any way that we can do more, given those three combined issues. So my question to you, Mr. Gilbert, is, given that, you know, the housing crisis plus our city's significant direction and prioritization on climate action goals, would this, would you consider using methodology that would increase the number by addressing the 70% versus the 30% of people that, as your study notes, already live here and have housing? Because the 70% is where we get to trying to have an actual local workforce.
The short answer is no. I think to the point about the housing fund, I think we can address some of what the, you know, perceived shortfalls. Again, we think our methodology is correct. We think we're doing more than enough. But to switch that, again, this is not a housing project. You, you guys personally have your fingerprints on a housing element plan that took a long time to certify, and last week with the state got fully adopted. And you had, you know, sites specific that say suitable sites inventory, right? And this isn't on it, and this is not a housing project. So I think we'll be, we'll be flexible, and we have, by adding six units onsite. And then I think the next discussion would be around the housing fund.
I appreciate you bringing up the fact that you would be willing to contribute to the Affordable Trust Fund, or Housing Fund. You have mentioned that in both previous hearings. I actually expected in this hearing that you would come back with a component around that, since in both previous hearings, you mentioned your willingness to contribute to that fund. Today, you have mentioned that again, yet in both past two hearings.
Well, because every time we come, you guys ask for more, right? So I mean, if there is a decision that's made, we will be there. But to this point, if I came back with a dollar, you'd ask for $2. If I came back with five, you'd ask for 10. So, I mean, here we are. We're talking about it, and we're willing to do it. So, but again, it's, this is kind of a point where we need to make a decision. And if there's a decision made and not appealed, we're willing to do it. I'm on record, so.
Okay, this is, okay. I, I appreciate that willingness. I think, you know, I, I don't understand what the process would be to ensure that the Housing Trust Fund contribution would come forward, given that that has not been, you know, that you have not provided that. So if this decision is.
A project condition. I'm assuming I won't get permits. I mean, there's lots of checks and balances along the way if I have a project here.
Thank you. To staff, if we were to move forward with having some type of contribution to the Housing Trust Fund, would that need to be determined today? Or would this, to Mr. Gilbert's point, be something that we could address in subsequent, I don't know what the mechanism would be?
It can, it could be addressed in a condition, but the condition would have to be carefully drafted, because there has to be a nexus between the impact and the condition, and it has to be proportional. So we'd have to thoughtfully do that.
Commissioner Wiskom, you got a follow?
Thank you. Since I, since I brought it up, I, I, my suggestion, or what's in my mind now, is that, that we don't try to negotiate it, but we give it to the community development director to negotiate with the applicant, something that, that they both deem appropriate. And I think that's the way, because the community development department has, has the Affordable Housing Trust Fund attached to it. So that's, I think that would be a pretty clean suggestion. So, thank you.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Wiskom. Switching gears a little bit, oh, sorry, you can go ahead.
If I can just jump in.
You have a follow-up to that?
Piggyback on this. I'm, I agree with, with my fellow commissioner here to that approach. And actually, that would help me get from the six to the 11. I just wanted to throw that out. Because I'm fixated on the 11, but I think that could be a possible solution.
Just for the commission, if this is where it's going, I will need a short break to, if you're going to do this, to think about the condition and how I'd draft it.
We will have a break at some point. Continue on.
Sorry. On community engagement, Mr. Gilbert, I have a couple of questions for you. In the last two hearings, you talked about transcripts of the community engagement you had done, and that you would be providing those. And in the staff presentation today, it was said that you were going to provide an overview of your community engagement. I think that that's been requested in both hearings. Are you going to, was that going to be part of your presentation?
Yeah, it's attached.
I saw that. I thought you meant like an overview of how, what was the sentiment? How did it go? Because I see that you hosted six individual meetings with individual business owners since the April, April hearing. I don't know which business owners. I don't know what the outcome of that was.
Yeah, and we were asked not to include names for obvious reasons. But yeah, I mean, look, there, there are groups clearly that will never get on board with this being a hotel project. And we are going to agree to disagree on that. And that's it. And then we all have to move on, right? And then there's groups that want to engage, that actually want to see this built, and how can we support them? So that, those are the people we're willing to work with. People that want housing here, it's, it's not the site for it, and we're not the ones, right? So those ones are, we're not going to ever get there, and so we've got to move on. And they're allowed to have their opinion, and so are we. We're allowed, they're allowed to have their opinion on housing, and we're allowed to build a hotel. So all, all the rest of them, from the business owners to the construction workers, we've talked, and we have, we've had very positive feedback on the project.
Okay. Lastly, so your, your stance on kind of the overall housing pieces, that you're willing to do the six and potentially a combination with the Housing Trust Fund, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. In your applicant letter, you note that the project creates overall benefits for the Funkzone community. Separate from TOT tax, separate from sewage drainage, kind of the infrastructure investment that would be required for this property. What community benefit is the project offering?
I think Garden Street and Yon and Ollie, we've talked about. I, I mean, those are big ones, so it's hard. I mean, we'll, we'll also allow artists inside. I mean, what are you specifically looking for? That you want, because I would say TOT, a couple million bucks a year, that could probably help solve the housing crisis in itself. If you guys, if you look the way, way TOT is structured now, it's 12%. 10% goes into the general fund. 2% goes to water and, and water quality and creeks. There's no reason 2% could be, couldn't be allocated to housing fund where you're not just taking us and getting a one-time shot at us, but you actually into perpetuity could solve a problem, right? So there's things like that. So for, to say there's no community benefit outside of TOT sewer upgrade, Yon and Ollie Garden Street, the gentleman talked about how the whole Funkzone was flooded until commercial development happened, and, and the project requirements. I think it's doing us a disservice. It's easy, optically, it helps the discussion about not building a hotel. But the reality is, is that's the bulk of the benefits, right? The bulk of the benefits of this project are actually underground and providing, helping in the budget. But no one wants to hear that. They want to see, are we going to provide, you know, art and, and a community space? Yeah, we will. If there's other things you want to see, we'd love to hear it.
I'm sorry, maybe my question was misunderstood. I was just suggesting, I was asking the question because your applicant letter specifically states that you're delivering other community benefits, and I was just asking what they are. I'm not suggesting that I have specific ideas of what they could be. To your point on TOT tax, I think there's significant concern that, given the amount of hotels that we currently have in our community, that the TOT tax that you provide will be cannibalizing the existing TOT tax that we're already getting from the plethora of hotels that we have today. So is there an analysis from staff, or does anybody know how many, like what the TOT tax that would be additional, given that, you know, we already have a lot of hotels that have vacancies? So I don't see that if it's going to be a significant increase, given the cannibalization of the existing hotel TOT tax?
I don't know that that is an accurate statement about the cannibalization. So, I mean, it's a high occupancy market. So you talk about vacancy. I look at it half-full as occupancy versus vacancy. It's a highly occupied market. Those dollars will go straight to the city. In, in no circumstance has a city analyzed it from a cannibalization standpoint. I mean, that's, that's our job as a hotel developer, to make a smart business decision. And so we think it is one, right? And, and that's for us to take that risk.
That it'd be attracting new visitors, like new, new customers that wouldn't be.
Or accommodating guys that have to go to Golita or go to Ventura, because we're, we're not providing it where it needs to be. I mean, hotels are very local, right? So it's not just about this broad strokes hotel market. I mean, it's very specific. So you're actually having, you know, tourists and things that you think are taxing your infrastructure, and we're actually making them pay for it, right? And so to just say broadly, you know, you're cannibalizing the, the stock, I don't think that's accurate.
Okay, I appreciate that. You're obviously a hotel expert. I am not. So if you feel that it's a new set of customers coming in, and that it does not, you know, impact the existing hotels or impact their vacancy rates, I'll take your word for it.
Okay, thank you.
That's the remainder of my questions.
Commissioner Barnwell has his.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are several things about this that disturb me because they're not being nailed down. And you asked a moment ago, what would be something that someone could come up with that would be a return back to the community? You know, what would be a suggestion? I would like to suggest, and see it in some document somewhere, that you have an art gallery. And that the art gallery be on the model of the one that we have downstairs in this building, which is, we have, you know, 30 or 40 lineal feet on both sides of the hallway to hang art. And the city of Santa Barbara began that about 10 or 15 years ago, and we followed the model of the county, which has a beautiful art display. That would be something that, I don't know what your interior space layout is like, but I think that would be an excellent thing to just commit some wall space within the building to hanging art. And maybe you have an opportunity to name it after some revered historical figure in the city of Santa Barbara, and it becomes a part of the art community. I want to, I'm not quite sure here yet, are, are you suggesting that the six affordable units and a contribution to the Housing Trust Fund would, that you would be doing both of those? And we haven't figured the dollar amount yet, but you're suggesting you would do them both? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, before I do mine, is there any other, okay. Maybe next speaker. Okay, so, and as my fellow commissioner knows, last time, back in August, I had a number of questions, and for the record, I'm going to ask some of those questions again to the city attorney, and I've warned her of that. First off, the specific plan that we're acting, been acting on, the 1983 specific plan, according to your staff report, was never formally certified by the California Commission. Is that correct? It says we have never submitted it to the Coastal Commission, and it has never been certified. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then the question I have follows that, if it hasn't been to the coastal, what, what is this legal basis to be applied at this particular time?
The, the plan has been in place for, since 1983. So the city and all the applicants and the public have relied upon it. And so at this point, we consider it to be accepted by the Coastal Commission because it has never been challenged. We consider it to be a valid specific plan within the coastal.
Okay, and I'll, I'll just leave it as, as your response. In July 25th, 2017, the city council adopted Resolution 17-070, which adopted a specific plan amendment number two for this particular exact site. Please explain why that newer specific plan amendment that applies to this specific property is not being used today?
Oh, now you're challenging my brain. I can't remember. Ms. Kennedy, do you remember why, I believe it was never adopted? There's a, a provision in it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll paraphrase your prior, prior answer. Your prior answer was there's a clause says it has to go and be certified by the Coastal Commission. Also, we have two specific plan, a specific, original specific plan that's never been before the Coastal Commission. We have an amendment that has never been before the Coastal Commission, and we're acting like, well, the second one we just toss out because it has this clause, the other one, we just ignore because it's just passage of time or something. I really, I really don't understand that. But if this ever gets litigated, I think this is definitely a significant procedural issue. We'll move on. The specific plan has, and we mentioned this last time, a whole lot of prescriptive statements, which are using the words shall and, shall and will. There is specific language, and we talked about this last time, that it says that this project shall go before the Architectural Review Board. It has not yet gone before the Architectural Review Board. How do we proceed with this project without it meeting the requirements of the specific plan that you are relying on?
Chair Baughy, it's that last clause that.
Chair Bauckey, it's that last clause that Commissioner Wiscum cited that says we're legally, unless otherwise legally required in the specific plan, it's, I think it's the last page. And in this case, this zone has now been made part of what would be considered under the purview of the Historic Landmarks Commission, so therefore, the Historic Landmarks Commission has purview over all of that land and that's per our charter, so our charter will trump this specific plan.
Okay. Moving on, Ms. Pujo, I've got a number of questions about the SEQA process for you. First off, last time we had a CAT exempt 32, now we're proposing to use another, in this case, not a CAT exempt, a statutory exemption of 15183. Could you tell me what the functional difference between using this statutory exemption and going through the negative declaration process is to public disclosure and as to processes that, to get information and responses from public agencies, especially resource agencies, which are required when you do an NDE? Could you please explain that?
Chair Bauckey, are you asking about the difference between the 15183 process and the neg dec or the categorical exemption?
No, the neg dec that you, if we weren't here, and I was honestly quite surprised that we didn't see a negative declaration in this case, and we got something else, we got another, we got a statutory exemption this time.
Yes.
So, and there are substantive differences of that process and I want the public to understand and my commissioners to understand what the differences of what we're doing now versus if you went through the negative declaration process, especially as it comes to public disclosure. And you, I think you made that comment, as to public review, that's, there's a different process there. There's also a different process as far as getting comments from resource agencies, because we don't have, I'm surprised we don't have like letters from Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife, Department of Toxics, because they don't know about this project. So please explain the difference.
Chair, Chair Bauckey, the difference between the 15183 process and a negative declaration process is that 15183 allows for some steps to be streamlined. So a negative declaration process requires the preparation of an initial study and then the release of a public draft, a negative declaration. And the public draft goes through a public review period, a notice of completion form is, is filled out, sent to the Office of Planning Research. The Office of Planning Research distributes that notice to the state agencies that are relevant. And the, the initial study neg dec is posted for 35 to 45, or sorry, 30 to 45 days to gather public comments. Following the public review period, staff review the comments of the public review as well as those of agencies and we determine if the negative declaration needs to be revised or updated to reflect those, to reflect those comments. For negative declaration, it does not require that, that the agency respond to those comments. That's the difference between a negative declaration, EIR. For a 15183 process, the, the part that is streamlined is the public review process. There's no notice of completion to the state and there's no public review period. I do want to say that the, the regional agencies are aware of this project and they have been involved through County EHS is our regulatory oversight agency that has been designated by the state for Santa Barbara region. And also Fish and Wildlife are aware of this project as well as Regional Water Quality Control Board. They've all been involved in the, in the preparation of various technical studies for each resource. So for example, for the wetland delineation for the Garden Street drainage feature, Fish and Wildlife were involved and the Regional Water Quality as well to understand what jurisdictional boundaries they have on that feature. Let's see if there's any. And the Coastal Commission, of course, is another one of those state agencies that would be notified about a negative declaration. So the part that is streamlined is that public review period.
Vice Chair Bauckey, if I may just-
Sure.
-jump on to that. As the applicant indicated, there also ironically was a case that came out on February 16th, Hilltop Group versus the County of San Diego, which, just a very high level summary, the county had originally supported 15183 exemption and then came back and, because it was available, and then came back and said, well, we'd rather actually just do the more environmental review, in which case the, the Court of Appeals said, no, if your 15183 is available, then that's really what you should be using because we do encourage streamlined processes.
And I think I've read a summary of that case and this is the, the gentleman next door that wanted to be included in the project and, you know, it was a very strange case of, of fact, honestly, so I'm not sure how much precedence we can rely on that particular case, but we'll, we'll move on. To Ms. Pujo, did the 2020, 2011 program, EIR, conclude if there would be a significant impact on housing and if so, on what type and what were the mitigations?
Chair Bauckey, I would have to look that up. In terms of housing, the SEQA guidelines have specific thresholds and one is the displacement of, here, I can, I can read them to you. Hold on one second. So this is, this is from Appendix G of the SEQA guidelines. And the specific housing thresholds are induced substantial unplanned population growth in an area either directly, for example, by proposing new homes and businesses, or indirectly, for example, through extension of roads or other infrastructure. That's one threshold. The second threshold, displaced substantial numbers of existing people or housing necessitating the construction of replacement housing elsewhere. So one threshold is about unplanned growth and that's having, creating demand and having an impact on resources. And the second one is about physical displacement. And I will check the general plan, EIR, about housing impacts.
Okay, while you're doing that, I've got a question for Ms. Kennedy. How well have hotels in the city with no mitigation monitoring or reporting plan or ACUP, which would have been required in the specific plan that, because it didn't go to the council, we don't have, complied with operational conditions of approval? Or do we even know?
So how are hotels complying with the general?
If you don't have a monitoring mechanism-
In regard to what operations are talking about?
Well, it could be anything. It could be whether or not they take their trash out like they're supposed to. I mean, conditional use permits have lots and lots and lots of, lots of operational parameters to them in which cities review. And my question is, what is the mechanism that we're going to implement these, these conditions and make sure they actually work?
Well, it really depends on the condition. I can't have a general answer. We respond to complaints for certain things.
Okay, how about, I'll just give you a subject, how about transit demand management programs? TDM, the, the TDM program, no, that'd be a good example.
That's a good example, yes. So we make sure, so we do condition compliance. We make sure all the conditions are complied with at different stages. So prior to building permit, we make sure they've submitted everything they needed to submit that's listed here. We follow up with whether they have to create different documents, like a transportation demand program. We look at it, we determine that it's adequate and they can move forward with their project. We could and, you know, follow up and monitor it, it's possible. I know that would be, transportation staff would answer that question as whether they follow up with different kinds of programs like that. We cannot, you know, monitor everything that's happening in the city and all hotel operations, so if there are issues, they're brought to our attention. We often get complaints about different things happening in the city, so we do the best we can is to monitor. But we'd also, you know, the, the applicant agrees to doing all these things and it's on the applicant often to maintain and operate according to what they've been permitted to do.
Okay, and, and that enforcement's what, complaint-based? Or how, how do you, you know, you leave it to the applicant, I mean, and maybe Mr. Gilbert moves on and there's somebody else, you know, how do you, you know, he could be a very, very upstanding citizen and doesn't mean the next guy's going to be. I still don't understand how, how you make sure these things, you know, happen and we've got lots and lots of conditions here and how, without a monitor, especially on the construction side, you know, that we actually, and actually, and then on the operations side, how, how we get sure this stuff actually gets done?
Well, we actually try to not have many operational conditions, that we, most conditions are prior to building permit issuance and related to construction. And as, with conditional use permits, we often do have them, but we also try to minimize that for just that reason that we can't go out and monitor everything continuously through the whole life of the project. But there may be certain ones and we could, if you have one in particular, we could always add, staff will monitor continuously or for a number of years or require the applicant to submit a report periodically. We had that for projects before, where they would, we would track them, but they would have to provide a report to us that we would make sure they, they're complying with that. So that's an option that you have to add.
Vice Chair Bauckey, I, I wouldn't recommend, the body doesn't have the ability to condition staff, staffing levels and workload. However, I think Ms. Kennedy was getting there, it would be something on the applicant to say annually provide a report on how they're complying with their general conditions of approval.
Right. I've seen that done before. Okay, moving on and, and I got about two, two more topical areas. One is, this project has a lot consolidation. What standards of review and determinations does the city have, and I know this came up also with the hotel on State Street, that views whether a lot consolidation is a good, bad, or indifferent thing? Do we have any actual standards or is it just, hey, I want to merge all my lots, it's all good? What standards and then what, what review process is there for such? Because I have a concern, honestly, and I've brought this up before on lot consolidation here before, but please explain to me how that decision-making process is, is done and what the city's review process is.
Well, the lot merger is processed through Public Works staff. So the applicant, it's called a voluntary merger, they say we want to merge the project and then we in planning look at it as a merged lot and see how the requirements fit in that merged lot and then it's processed through Public Works for the merger, as in general, the way it works.
Is, is there any consideration of removing historical accessways as part of it? In this case, Mason Street is disappearing in some shape or form because it sort of is on lots of drawings and it's even on the applicant's drawings and we're losing this accessway. I'm just trying to understand, was there even a question of whether that was a good idea at the time, as part of this application?
As far as this application, I don't think we looked at that. In general, we would look at different, you know, easements, anything that affects the land. We definitely look at title reports and, and all that to see what affects the property. In this case, and the EIR and specific plan that was not called out, I don't believe. It was shown though as being merged. I mean, this area A was considered as like one lot and the development as one lot, so it was assumed that they would be merged as proposed.
Okay, and following up with sort of the same, at least as to Mason Street. I can't find any analysis whatsoever in any of the documents that have been provided through this process. An analysis of, of basically access, secondary access and such. I mean, we got parking, we've got traffic, but we don't get into the conversation of access. And I noticed at one point in time, we had a proposal and the commission was unanimous in their, their support of a roundabout to provide better east-west access and including, you know, to allow better east-west access to the other side of, of the rights property so there could be good development there. And it just sort of disappeared and I still don't understand why we now have this left turn pork chop thing and roundabout.
Well, there was a lot of analysis and discussion about it and I think transportation staff could speak to that more. And I'm not sure if Jessica is here or not. Jessica Grant from Transportation Planning was invited. I'm not sure if she, but in any case, yeah, it kind of went away as an issue. It was discussed and often there's a lot of back and forth and different designs on projects and then essentially everyone agrees, it's supportable the way it is now and they've, this is what the project is.
It was staff's idea and then did it go away because the applicant didn't want it? I'm still trying to understand why it went away. It seems to me it still should be part of this project, honestly.
The way the project's designed now is the preference of city, city staff is the way it is now.
Okay, so city staff changed its mind about the roundabout because it was their idea at the time. Is that correct?
I don't recall whose idea it was. I know it was one of the options.
Vice Chair Bauckey, the, the city controls that right of way, so if transportation engineer and transportation planning were fine with it, then we were, means that the city's supportive of the current design.
I understand that. Okay, so they changed their mind. Okay, last, and then this is to, to the consultant that did the housing. Would you please come forward? And I, I think you got some, some of the conversation questions, I think a little bit from Commissioner Wardro. And for, for first off, thank you for at least giving us some math, because this is the first time, you know, this has been a requirement since 1983 and why it wasn't ever here just boggles my mind, but I'll leave it at that. What I don't understand is the rationale of using the 30% as how you discount what would be a much higher number, because that's the number of people that live in Santa Barbara currently and you got the 70% which you're going to export from this project. And the whole point of the condition of approval, that it's in the specific plan, is to mitigate any adverse impact. So I can see a logic of, okay, the, the folks that are here, reside, don't, they're already here, but why aren't we doing this calculation for the 70% which we would like not to be commuters?
Well, remember, this analysis is about what's going to happen in the future, so it's not referring to any baseline condition that's there now, which there are, there's buildings, there's people there, there's employees there. It's, it's a new development, you're going to have new people that will need housing because presumably, and the ratio would, you would expect of that to be this ratio that exists overall in the city. So it's the best source of data we have is going forward, new people come because they are being employed here. What percent of those new people, so we're not talking about accommodating existing in this situation, we're talking about net new growth in the city. 30% of those workers would be expected, new workers would be expected to want to be housed in, in, in the city of Santa Barbara. So we wouldn't expect if a new project comes in, 100% would be, because that's not the, that's essentially not the ratio. So we could presume that it, it should be higher. And that's a policy question. What we did is what would be analytically expected, given existing conditions, how much would likely be there? Now, there's a whole history behind that 70-30 split, which is not necessarily the responsibility of this project, but there's, it's just with the, just objective fact, that's what it is. Going forward, to be, just to do a rational, objective projection, this is what we would project to happen. Now, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, that's not, wasn't really, we're just looking at actually what we would expect, it's the best piece of information we have, which is the existing commute patterns in the city, so that's what we would expect to occur. Going, whether that's high or low, that's, that's almost like, you wish it was better. Some cities are better, some cities are worse, but I'm just kind of projecting analytically what we would expect.
Okay, so this goes back to Commissioner Wardro, it's a sort of like continuation of the- the status quo, because basically that's what you're using information, basically we have this 30-70 split.
Right, it's like saying, this project won't make the project, this project isn't going to make it worse, but it's not necessarily being charged with fixing the problem either, it's just basically representing the status quo. That's correct.
If I could just add a couple of points. The specific plan focused on addressing housing impacts in the city, that's what is being addressed in that study. It does not, even though it may be a laudable goal to stop people from commuting and having them work closely, that is not a fair reading, I believe, of the specific plan. In addition, if you really want to, people are going to commute, that's just what people do. There's a lot of jurisdictions, a lot of cities, La Vista, Galita, the county, that are very close proximity, people are going to move where the jobs are, particularly if there's a tight job market, as there may be over time. And if you really want to address the overall number, you need to build housing in other jurisdictions, which is, as the city attorney said, there has to be a nexus, there isn't one, nor could it be feasibly accomplished here today. Thank you.
Okay, so that, I have concluded my comments, but I now have a whole bunch of other commentators back. Commissioner Whiskam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question. I want to go back to the nine parking spaces. Ms. Kennedy, we're, I gather, using, to determine, to determine that we're using Title 28, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have approved projects, I think the Beer Garden was one of them, that we approved under Title 30 parking conditions, and which actually relaxes the parking a little bit, since Title 30 is the new zoning ordinance. So is there, what would be the impact of this commission authorizing Title 30 use for that in this, on this project? I think you're getting my question.
I think I have to defer to city attorney.
Pardon?
I'm going to refer, defer to the city attorney for that question.
Chair Bauckey, Commissioner Whiskam, are you suggesting that a condition to impose Title 30?
No, I'm not. I'm suggesting that if, I want to know what the impact is, because if there's a chance under Title 30, which we've used in the coastal zone before, if there's a chance to relax it so that perhaps this restaurant could be open to the public, that might be a way to do it. So, because I know Title 28 is really restrictive, and Title 30, when we went through the new zoning ordinance, really relaxed the parking standards for restaurants and things like that. So I know you're smiling at me.
No, I'm just thinking, Commissioner Whiskam, in the glorious day that Title 30 is certified by the Coastal Commission and becomes effective, I think the applicant could then go forward and, you know, we could reevaluate the project. They'd put in an application and we could look at it at that time.
Okay, so that would be something that would be done after, if we were to approve it, and it would be done afterwards, to perhaps move to Title 30 for it, or an evaluation of that be done?
Yeah. Ms. Arshinaga, I suppose I could put in an application for a re-review and reconsideration of the conditions and the parking?
Thank you. Ms. Arshinaga, so the question is, if Title 30 were certified in the coastal zone at a future date, and that code had a different parking rate for the proposed uses, such as a restaurant, could the applicant at a future date then request modification of their presumed permit to comply with those newer standards?
Yeah, well, and I wasn't even thinking, wait until Title 30 is certified in the coastal zone, because we've certif, we have approved projects using Title 30 parking conditions in the coastal zone, other projects, and I think the Beer Garden was one of the examples. So I'm just thinking that if we had a chance here to, if it had to go to staff hearing officer or something, to relax the parking standard to the Title 30 standards, that we might get more public amenities. That's my question.
I see. I think without knowing, I, my assumption is that the Beer Garden, and I'm checking with city staff, it's not that we use Title 30 parking requirements, it's that they applied for a parking modification.
They did.
And in the coastal zone, in a parking modification, you're usually looking at demand, so a parking demand study is usually what we rely on to support approving a parking modification. In addition to that, usually, sometimes staff can make the analysis of, in addition to meeting parking demand, there's also rational cause to believe this is sufficient, because if it were in, using Title 30 standards, it would be met. That's usually a secondary rationale, we usually lean into the parking demand study as our actual, to make our findings, but it's probable that we might have also made that analogy just to help the commission understand a secondary reason, perhaps supporting a parking modification at the Beer Garden. But that's my understanding, how we typically use it.
I don't even know if it was the Beer Garden project. I know that has ballet parking associated with it, too.
But to be clear, we cannot apply Title 30 standards directly, not now, or the only time we would is if they were adopted and certified by the Coastal Commission.
Right, but I think in whatever project we did, it was not that we applied Title 30, we used Title 30 as the example to do the parking modification, so.
But it would have also required a parking demand study, right, along with it?
Okay.
And I think, and so, and we have that case here, they are asking for a parking modification, and they have a parking demand study associated with it. The problem therein lies that the demand study requires a certain number, and that's what they're providing.
Right.
And the leeway is those nine spaces, as the applicant mentioned, you know, expanding beyond that would then mean additional parking. So I think that's where this project in particular is kind of stuck in terms of additional spaces. Does that clarify?
It does, but I think, I think the greater goal here is, you know, that, you know, we don't necessarily penalize projects because they're in Title 28, when we have zoning standards for Title 30 that are, you know, we spent a long time on Enzo, on the new zoning ordinance, and.
Correct. And I do want to note another thing that the applicant mentioned, they're in the zone of the AB 2097, where parking requirements are waived for commercial development. So you will see and continue to see coastal development permits come in, waiving their parking under AB 2097, with the premise that it's a walkable area.
Right.
You know, accessible by lots of different transit as well. That provision explicitly exempts hotels, so this application's not able to take advantage of that. But I just wanted to draw that distinction, so there's not confusion.
Does it, could it be applied to the amenities of a hotel?
If they are not directly servicing the hotel and accessible by the hotels, so if they were not connected to the, you know, a separate, there is, if it's associated with the hotel, that's how it reads, but if it's, the intent being that it's for that hotel use, I don't know. That's how the bill is written, so we're just implementing that.
The short answer is, in this case, no.
I'm kind of gathering, I'm getting it from both sides here. Okay, I tried. That was, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wardlow, you're back on the screen.
Thank you, Chair. Question for staff. It has been noted that the applicant will be submitting the remediation action plan and soil management plan after an approval from this body. Is that, is that typical with projects like this? Do we, or is it often that we would receive them beforehand, or is this the normal standard?
Commissioner Wardlow, excuse me, yes, that is the typical process, that we coordinate with county EHS, they tell us what needs to be done, and that the remediation action plan needs to be completed before the building permit stage. And so that way, they're still on the hook, but at least they have their land use approval.
Okay. I appreciate staff's work to really explain the rationale for why this project would qualify for the streamlined review under 15-183, and would not therefore require public review and public input. Yet since we've received multiple comments and concerns from the public stating that this assessment and approach is inaccurate, which is what happened in the last hearing with the last CEQA exemption, and understanding that transparency for the public and better understanding of the environmental impacts that this project could have on our community in terms of air quality, soil, water contamination, is a primary goal of CEQA. If this commission did not agree with the city's approach to CEQA at this time, can you please explain what the next step to address CEQA in a transparent manner, that would both, that would better alleviate the significant environmental and public health concerns that have been raised to us, what that would be? That was a long-winded answer, that was a long-winded question, I'll simplify. If this commission did not agree with the city's assessment on the new approach to CEQA, what would be the next step? Because I've been told that there is a path where it would be maybe three months to do an actual, another study that would address all of these issues that have continuously been raised in public comment around the issue, that there are peculiar, that there is offset, and additional issues like outside of the site. What would that be? Because, you know, obviously, you know, I am not a CEQA expert, I would assume that many members of the public are not CEQA experts, but in reading the significant public comment, these are really concerning to me, and I believe that we should be doing, you know, the most due diligence that we can, so I just want to understand what that would, what that next step would be.
Chair Bauckey, Vice Chair Wardlow, it would be, you would make the findings on why you cannot make the 15-183, and you would deny it, and just make that, which basically would, the project wouldn't move forward, because the project can't move forward without the first CEQA approval. However, staff has reviewed it and believes the 15-183 is the appropriate streamlined method for this project, but if you can make the findings as to, for example, what's peculiar environmentally about this site, then that's how you would deny it.
I think my question, I'm not looking to deny, but what I'm looking to say is that there has been so much concerns raised, right? And my understanding is the whole purpose of CEQA, and what we're trying to do is provide transparency and educate people on what these concerns are. By doing it this way, we're not doing the public disclosure, we're not doing the public input, period. Is there another mechanism that this, that the city and applicant do go through, some type of initial review? Because that's what I've been told, is there's an initial review that would be more recommended by CEQA that we could do, and then at that point, there would be another determination made, not to say that this project dies, but that this project would then have more public disclosure, more public input on what all these issues are that are being raised in written public comment.
If I may, I think what she's asking is, would an initial study process be that, be what, I think that's what she's asking, is would an initial study?
Vice Chair Bauckey, or excuse me, Chair Bauckey, Vice Chair Wardlow, our municipal code with regards to CEQA explains the process, and it's the community development director who makes that initial review and makes the determination as to what process we're going to use, what the proper CEQA process and level of review is. In this case, that decision has been made, that it's a 15-183. However, if this commission disagrees, because there's a finding that it's not meeting the 15-183 requirements, then you would say that you cannot make the CEQA findings, and the project would stop.
And there's no other, there's no next step?
No.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
You were going to respond.
Chair Bauckey, Vice Chair Wardlow, I'd like to add that there's been a number of investigations done on the site for soil contamination, and I apologize that I am not an expert in hazardous materials, but we've been working very closely with county EHS, and they are overseeing those investigations, and they are very familiar with the project. And so they have been guiding us on how to condition the project.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Barnwell.
Did you say Barnwell?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions. The discussion about the 30%, 70%, and how we calculated the number of affordable units. If I understood you correctly, you were saying that we're looking at the future, and when the hotel is up and built, 30% of the imaginary proposed employees will live in Santa Barbara. Is that correct? And 70% will not. They will commute. Forgive me, but I still don't see why the 70% isn't also germane, because we are suggesting that in the future, we will have X number of employees, and 30% of them will want to live here. Now, it's interesting, because they may already live here, they may already be in space here, and there are Santa Barbara people that are going to go get the job. But if we're, if we do, if we do what you just suggested, where it's going to be all new people, everybody that works at the hotel is going to be all new people, and 30% of those new people are going to need a place in Santa Barbara. Okay? But 70% of those new people are not being provided for. And as a consequence of that, a whole host of environmental issues come up, I mean, transportation, and, you know, roads, and police and fire, and all that stuff, that is the, that is the public support for the decision of the private developer to not do something. And I'm still confused about that number. Now, I also want to ask, when you come up, please come up and answer the question, but the fact that there, that the city of Santa Barbara does not have these various fees, and inclusionary this, and inclusionary that, that doesn't mean that those issues aren't still there. They're still there. And we may not have a black-code letter law that says we have to do it in a certain way, but it seems to me, I don't know how everyone on this board feels, but our name is Planning Commission, and we're supposed to look forward and plan. And I take that very seriously. Now, if we say something, then you guys want to appeal to city council? That's great, I don't know. I want to be very judicious in my response to yours, I'm not necessarily, I mean, the project, it's not necessarily a bad project, but this housing issue is, got me troubled. And I don't know how that mathematical formula of yours is helping me.
Once again, Dale Gulsby, Commissioner Barnwell, excellent questions. If I may jump in, the issue isn't as much methodological, but legal. Based on the best information we have, 70% of the future workers will be from elsewhere. They live there, people commute, it's a fact, particularly low-income workers tend to commute more. I represent a lot of hotel projects, and that is a fact. At the end of the day, the specific plan requires that housing impacts be addressed within the city. The six onsite units plus the to-be-determined contribution will address that effectively, and indeed, more than any other project that I'm aware of has ever done in this city. To the extent there are issues in extra jurisdictions, well, problematic and worrisome, it's outside the purview of the city to solve those problems. There's no nexus or connection to allow that. And with respect to other potential impacts, those are analyzed in the technical reports. There's a CEQA traffic analysis, there's a non-CEQA traffic analysis that shows that impacts, including trips from employees, will be less in significance under the city's threshold. So that has been addressed, and again, I agree with you, in a perfect world, everybody would be able to walk to work. Unfortunately, we live in an imperfect world, and the tools that you have, you'll use them, and I think you'll develop a groundbreaking and precedent-setting solution. Does it solve everything? No? Is it as best as you can do? Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wardlow.
Thank you. I have a question for the housing specialist, Jason Moody, I believe. I'd just like to confirm for the record, how did you arrive at six? Was that the units that were described to you from the developer?
That's correct, I didn't come up with that number.
And the purpose of the housing study in the last hearing, and the hearing before that, was to understand the methodology of how we arrived at six. That was the purpose?
I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last hearing, so I can't.
I understand that.
Yeah, his math arrived at 11. We held firm at six because of precedent and case studies showing that most cities in California have two to 18%, right? So we're at 55%. So he didn't come up with that number. We had that number before. He came up with 11, based on the math he's shown and is in the report, and so we said, okay, six units is 55 to 60%. Most cities do 2 to 20%. We are, you know, we are doing more than our fair share, right?
Okay, thank you.
I just, I need to add, if I may.
I just, I need to add, if I may, Commissioner Wardlow, that right now, we know that a unit in Santa Barbara costs about $500,000. That means these six units, right, cost $3.5 million. So I just want to make that point. It's not cheap.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Mr. Chair, maybe you can help me out on procedural issues. Are we in a discussion here or how, at what point do we all key off of what was just, is that happening later or?
The deliberation portion has not started yet.
Okay.
So if anybody has any further questions, because there's definitely comments I could have made to that last conversation, I'm not going, I'm going to withhold that. I think at this point in time, I think it's a good time for us to take a break and then we'll come back and do deliberations.
Chair Bauckey, I just wanted to let you know that I did receive information from the city's traffic engineer that there was not enough right-of-way on the east side to construct the roundabout. So as designed, the project can address safety on the left turn egress with the median pork chop.
Okay. Thank you for the response. All right. So we're going to take a five-minute break.
Chair Bauckey?
Yes.
Could I get 10?
You can get 10. Oh, yes. Okay. You can have 10. Well, if I get 10.
Thank you.
Okay. At 4:15, we will resume. Commissioner Wardlow, could you please? Okay. Thank you all. We're going to start the deliberation process. Commissioner Whiskam has put her name already on the screen. Anybody else want to get their name up there? Do those, do that now. Before we do that, the applicant has three minutes and 15 seconds left to say whatever you would like to say at this point.
Once again, for the record, Dale Goldsmith, there's been a lot of discussion about the appropriateness of the CEQA approach. I thought staff did a very good job in the city attorney in explaining why it's appropriate. I'll just reiterate, the exemption requires the analysis of, and only, and limits the analysis to impacts that are peculiar to the project. Those impacts have to be specific and unique to the project and not general impacts such as hazardous materials in the soil, as staff mentioned. And in this case, there are a number of expert technical studies that show that, that any potential peculiar impacts will be reduced to less insignificant upon application and compliance with universally applicable uniform policies. And those studies include air quality, noise, traffic biology. They're listed in the CEQA checklist. I won't, in the interest of time, read them all. As in the Hilltop case that both I and the city attorney referenced, just, just as in that case, substantial evidence supports the staff's determination that the project is qualified for the Section 15183 exemption and there's no credible evidence to the contrary. Therefore, the Section 15183 exemption is appropriate, both based on the letter of CEQA and recent case law, and we would respectfully request that you approve the project. I'm going to turn it over to Sean Gilbert to address the housing issue. Thank you.
Well, again, thank you guys for your time and I'm glad we'll, you know, come to a decision today. I think part of the discussion and the question was what we would do, involuntary contribute to the housing fund. And we're willing to put a half a million dollars into the, the housing fund at certificate of occupancy. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. We'll start with Commissioner Whiskam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. That was going to be a question to you and I understand from the city attorney that you had to put out a number. So we appreciate you putting up that number. I, I've got to go back to 1983 when the specific plan was adopted. This is a, an example of sound community planning. The specific plan was put into place and the, with the, with the purpose of, of doing the Garden Street and Yanana Lee Street extensions. That gave us a gateway from Cabrillo to, to, a gateway at Garden Street on Cabrillo to the city. And I think in '83, when it was put into place, it was sound community planning. I think in '97 and '98, when it came to fruition, the Garden Street extension, it's sound community planning and it's time for us to let the Wright family have their part of what was proposed. It's an ethical issue here. It's, we, we have benefited from, from the, from the Garden Street and Yanana Lee extensions, but we have not given the Wright family the opportunity to do what is in the specific plan. And Mr. Cornell, I think Mr. Cornell stated, it's 2.275 acres of developable land that he donated that would be worth $17 million today. And that is sound community planning. We did something that was of great benefit to the city. And in addition to that, the applicant is going to put in 50% for a new sewer line that increases the capacity. And now they're willing to put in $500,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which will be a very significant contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, in addition to supplying six units of affordable housing on the site. I think they bent over backwards. The city originally had a development plan finding whether a proposed development would have a significant unmitigated adverse impact on the city's affordable housing stock, which this would have, which was removed in 2013 as part of the Growth Management Program ordinance in recognition that the updated general plan and associated EIR worked towards a better balance of uses overall rather than on a case-by-case basis. And Ms. Allen referenced this, we do have the Growth Management Program. We have, all the setback areas on the site are going to be landscaped and where they only have to provide two acres of open space, they're providing 2.28 acres of open space. It's consistent with the principles of sound community planning because the hotel project is permitted in the specific plan and it does meet all the applicable criteria for the specific plan, the zoning ordinance and the coastal land use plan. And the purpose of the specific plan is to ensure the orderly development. of this specific plan is to ensure the orderly development of real property in accordance with the general plan and the city's local coastal plan. This certainly meets the city's local coastal plan and the Coastal Act. And I'm going to go back to the question I asked. In the event of conflict between the specific plan and the general plan and ordinances of the city, the specific plan or conditions shall prevail. We do have an obligation. We have an ethical obligation to do what we said we would do back when they dedicated the land. The project is located within the Lower State Street component area of the 2019 Coastal Land Use Plan. It's an area where tourism, it's a tourism and transportation hub and key visitor-serving area for coastal access. So, this plan to provide lower-cost hotel rooms in this area fits that beautifully in the Lower State Street component area. I think we all know the city's local coastal land use plan and the Coastal Act prioritize lower-cost visitor and recreational facilities for protection, encouragement, and where feasible provision of access to the coast and use of the coast. Mr. Chitilo talked about strategies and programs to minimize impacts. That's what they've done. They have minimized the impacts. There's nothing that says they need to be eliminated. We're not going to eliminate them, but we are minimizing them with the steps that the applicant has taken to, for affordable housing. And let me just see if I have anything else here. I'm kind of jumping around. In the Keep the Funk Letter, it said the proposed project looms over our horizon like an impending storm without offering any semblance of reciprocity. The reciprocity was offered in 1983, when the specific plan was put together, and in 1987, 97, sorry. So, I think that we've done everything possible. I think that the applicant and their team have endured three long hearings on this. And I am in full support of the SEQA findings, the parking modification, the coastal development permit, and the development plan with the conditions of the six units and the $500,000 contribution to our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is pretty significant, and I thank you for that. So, thank you.
All right. Next is Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to read you a quick list, very quickly. The subject property is 250 hotel units. The Marmonti that's across the street from the East Beach Pavilion is 201. The Rosewood in Montecito, the Miramar, is 158. The Santa Barbara Inn at the end of Milpus, right by the beach, is only 70. The Californian downtown on State Street is 121. The Biltmore is 206. We're proposing a hotel of 250. I could go down this list. The Canary, the Santa Barbara, the Virginian, the courtyard by Marriott out in Galita, there's two or three out there. The Lemon Tree, the Hilton, that's out at the corner of Stork and Hollister, which I think everyone knows, it's 138 units. So, we are, with the exception of the Red Lion, which I think is now called the Hilton, with the exception of the Hilton, we all need to know that we're building the largest hotel on the South Coast. I think it's deserving of a close scrutiny. I am not prepared to fall on my sword over the SEQA issue, but I am disappointed that we didn't go to the negative deck because you have, the staff is, and staff does a great job, so I'm not really beating you up here, but you've just told us that fishing game did kick in, and they did give you advice. We don't know that by reading this documentation. And that's one of the things that the negative deck gives us, is these, you know, knowledgeable experts in the environment have ticked off all these things. We didn't get that. Now, you're telling us that they were in there, and we take your word for it, and I totally believe you, but I think that's one of the reasons for the negative deck concept. And the public is out there watching what we're doing, and we're approving a 250-unit hotel on the beach. Now, that, we can't just, we can't just go over the top of that. Insofar as a hotel providing housing for its employees, I want to make sure everybody understands this. The Ellen Canta Hotel, until it was remodeled recently, had a basement of 10 units under the kitchen for the bellboys and maids and stuff to live in. The Potter Hotel, across from the train station, until that hotel burned down in, I want to say, like 1975, they had a complete hotel for all of the employees that worked for the Potter. This is not a new concept. Now, I applaud that you guys are breaking new ground here in what we all seem to think is a very unusual gesture, but it's not. Historically, it has been done time and time again, and particularly in Santa Barbara. I want to reiterate what I said a moment ago. We're here, we're here to provide what I think is our best effort on this project and what we think about it. If it goes to, when things go to the city council, they become highly political, and they may not necessarily be the best thought process, because that's just the way the council is. But they have empowered us as a planning commission. We are their tool to look at this thing the best possible way we can and not leave something undone or unsaid. At least, that's what I think. I was a general contractor for years. I am on the side of construction. My profession is real estate appraisal. I can't tell you how many times I have done things like this. Something I'm disappointed in, as far as the applicant is concerned, is in, you know, 30 minutes, I found out all the hotels on the South Coast. I don't see you guys having done a study of what your competition is going to be. I have been asked by the Hilton Hotel at least six times over my professional career, before they build a Hilton Hotel, to go out into the general geography and see what the competition is, and then come back with an absorption study. And they decide whether or not they should be building one. I don't see such a study here, which is disappointing. I would feel better had there been one. The things that I'm troubled by that aren't nailed down, it's going to be a moderate hotel. We've even used the word low cost. In the business of this group of people here and the staff, the word low cost is specific. It has a dollar attached to it. It's the low-cost affordable housing, or the low-cost federal or state, whatever those are, but there's a number attached to that. When we loosely say it's going to be low cost, it's going to be moderate, I want to give you an example, to go back to what was said earlier about how this cannot be policed or monitored. The word police sounds a little harsh, but it cannot be monitored. The Canary Hotel, five stories high, absolute limit of the city's height ordinances, up to about six inches. I was on the planning commission when we approved it. Went through a whole bunch of stuff, because that's a big building downtown. They come in front of us, ready to get the stamp of approval, and we just happen to look at their new plans, and guess what's on the roof? A swimming pool, which creates, by the city attorney's definition, another floor. So, they have just busted through the city's ordinance on how many floors they could have by just making it a swimming pool. We argued and argued over it, and finally, the planning commission said, okay, you can use it as a sixth floor, but only for your room occupants in that hotel. No one else can use that swimming pool, just for your hotel occupants. They got a new manager. Six months later, they got another manager. By the end of the first 12 months, they had a manager that didn't know that that existed as a requirement. Now, there are weddings up there, there's birthday parties up there, there's a whole bunch of things up there, against the conditions of approval that the planning commission had originally laid down. Now, I'm not trying to beat up on the Canary, and I go up there and I like it, but it's one of those loose, unnamed planning commission requirements that didn't get monitored or policed. So, that's why I'm a little concerned about, you know, we're going to be low cost, particularly when you guys, as a normal course of action, you're on the high end of hotel units. You don't do the low end. You guys do the higher-end stuff. I'm saying all of this so you know where I'm coming from. Overall, I don't think, I disagree with my fellow commissioners, I don't believe we have any ethical obligation to follow through on the specific plan because it's old. And many, many old things, we can't follow through on. Many traffic things, and many air pollution things, and thousands of little things. We just don't follow through what we used to do. I do applaud the Wrights. I think their gift changed the fabric of the coastline. There's no question about it. That was my lumberyard, Channel City Lumber. I always thought it was a bunch of junk right there. They cut that road through, and both my dad and I stood there and went, oh my God, the beach is right there. Who knew, right? It changed everything. And I think what the Wrights gave us was fabulous, and I appreciate it. Another thing I want to comment on is the fact that everybody wanted housing. I want housing, but we can't have housing on that lot because there's no affordability component to that. So, if you build housing, you'll get 85, and you'll get bonus density, so God knows. You could get 100, and they'll all be market rate units. And we know what they'll be if they're market rate and they're next to the ocean. They won't go to Santa Barbara people at all. They certainly won't hit the target audience we want to hit, which is the affordability segment of the community. Unfortunately, and everybody needs to know that, there is no option, as I see it, for housing. The hotel is it. We've got to remember, it's the biggest hotel on the South Coast, next to the Red Lion. So, we've got to pay attention to it. Now, Mr. Cornell said a moment ago, and I'm sorry, I don't know the lead guy's name for the project. Was it Sean? Ah, good, Sean. My son's name is Sean. Sean stood up and said they want to give $500,000. Earlier, Mr. Cornell said it's $300 a square foot to build these units. Well, if you build studio units of 400 square feet, that half a million bucks is going to get you four more units. That means the gift of the six and the dollar amount will get us to 10 affordable units. I'm all about that. I'm all about the housing. The city of Santa Barbara only has two issues in front of it right now, as I see it. One of them is maintenance of the community, what we call the community, the architecture and the feeling of place, the feeling of atmosphere, the place we love. There's a sense of community. And then the other one is housing. Those are the only two. And we can't shine that on. So, I appreciate that you guys have come up with your six, and I appreciate that you've come up with the $500,000. I'm not going to fall on my sword on the SEQA thing. I want to hear what my other commissioners have to say, but I thank you for the housing, which was my issue. It's unfortunate we didn't do a negative deck because we really don't know what went in to the 502, 5354, whatever that number was. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner DeLucio.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for the $500,000, because actually, I was fixated on the 11 units, but with the six onsite and contributing to the housing fund, I appreciate that. But that being said, the only reason housing, we're even talking about housing, is because of the specific plan in 1983, they called out impact, a housing study. And that's, if it wasn't for that, you would be, bring a hotel in front of us, and housing wouldn't even be on the table. You just had to follow through because they asked to do a study, and the study triggered that you would need some units, some, supply some house, some additional housing. But, so, that's a benefit here. We are getting the six units, and we're getting a half a million dollars into a housing fund. The other thing is, I would prefer the negative deck also. I know, I understand. I thank you, staff, for explaining to me that we had to go with the Streamlining Act to, approach to, of SEQA, to get where we're going to get. But again, there's so many documents floating around. They've done so many studies, and, but everything's all over the place. Everything's not tied together. And unfortunately, we're not going to have a monitoring plan. I would have loved to seen, out of a negative deck, we would have had a monitoring plan of, because, environmentally, what they needed to do. Not to say they won't do it, and I know there's another plan in place to make it happen, but I would have preferred there to be a monitoring plan. But again, we're, they did go through the SEQA checklist, and we can make the findings for the exemption. So, that's the way I prefer we leave it at this time. And also, we have to also take, finally, the benefit, the benefits that have already gone into this and the Wright family with the, all the improvements they've done. And also, they are going to continue to do improvements. We have to upgrade the sewer, and then all the, there will be a lot of TOT, and then donate land, et cetera. And I think there's other factors that I can't think of right now. But, so I'm actually, I think at this point, we need to move this along, and I intend to favor and would vote for the project.
Next, Commissioner, Vice Chair Wardle.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, staff and the applicant, for all of the significant work that's been done on this. I know that we've had many discussions on this, and I really do think we've come a long way on this topic, and there's been a lot of changes to this, and I appreciate everyone's significant work on this. I agree with my fellow commissioners that we have, that we have an ethical commitment to give the Wright family the ability to develop their land in the confines of the allowable uses, a hotel or residential. But I do also believe that our ethical commitment to the Wright family does not outweigh our ethical commitment to our community, both in terms of properly addressing SEQA in a public manner, and in encouraging the development of affordable housing above all other developments. Transparency and the prioritization of the public good is our primary commitment, and when considering what is sound community planning. I greatly appreciate the applicant's discussion today regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and their willingness to commit an additional $500,000 towards that, as the housing element makes it extremely clear that the prioritization of production of deed-restricted affordable housing and non-residential community priority projects with broad community benefits over all other land uses and housing types is our priority, as noted in policy 2.1 of the 2023 housing element. And in regards to the plethora of public comment that we received, I really want to thank the community. It was very helpful to hear everyone's concerns and thoughts on this process. I too share concerns. I feel we've come a long way from where we first started in terms of mitigating the housing, but I do continue to have concerns regarding the SEQA exemption and the issues raised by our community. I look forward to continuing this discussion. That's the remainder of my questions.
Next speaker is Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Chair. This has been a tough one for me, but at the end of the day, I like what Commissioner Wiskom said, and agree with her. I don't know so much if it's an ethical obligation to support this project, but if we turn down the hotel, are we going to get affordable housing? No way. No way. I do want to mention the $500,000 going into the Housing Trust Fund, because what we utilize by, for example, the housing authority, that it will be able to trigger a great deal more by having that funding than what just $500,000 by itself could accomplish. It's a very, very big project, but it's been carried forward since 1983, when it was first approved. And I agree with everybody who said in the housing, we need housing way more than we need more hotel rooms, and I doubt if there's anybody up here who doesn't agree with that. But this is what has been planned for. It's been carried forward through several general plan updates and other updates to planning. So, it's not something that just came along out of the blue. So, I will be supporting approving the project.
Okay. I think all the commissioners have spoken. It's probably my turn.
It's probably my turn. I appreciate the staff's hard work on this. This is a lot, a lot, a lot of work and please do not take the comments I've made in the past and on this project about you're not doing your job. But it will tell you I am very concerned about the environmental process we're undergoing here and that it doesn't provide what I would believe is acceptable disclosure to the public as to the environmental impacts of this project. I understand that staff is now using the CEQA exemption 15183 instead of the previous categorical exemption. Staff have determined that there are no project specific impacts, but also that the project is consistent with the land use and scope of analysis of the program EIR. However, Section 15183 of CEQA also requires the impacts be assessed if they are potentially significant offsite impacts and cumulative impacts, which were not addressed in the prior EIR or if they were previously identified as significant impacts, which is a result of substantial new information that wasn't known at the time the EIR was certified. That was 2011. Whether they are determined to have more severe adverse impacts than were discussed in the prior EIR. As the staff said, the program EIR evaluated in 1983, specific plan as such relied on the provision in the specific plan that a housing study be conducted to assess the project's impacts on the city's housing stock and that a study at a minimum would develop strategies and programs to minimize any potential adverse impacts. However, the applicant's proposal is only for six of what I believe is of 25 units needed for this project, assuming that we even give them a 30% reduction for the employees that are projected to be Santa Barbans. And that means that there will be an adverse impact that would not have been addressed in the general plan EIR. This is especially concerning given the affordable housing crisis we've had and is substantially more severe than we had when the program EIR was prepared 13 years ago. I do have to note that the original EIR thought that 93% of the employees that would be generated in the specific plan area would be housed locally and therefore there was only a need for seven units. That number has gone from 93 to 30% based on the information the applicant has provided us. That shows you what has happened to this community since 1983. We are exporting our environmental impacts outward to other cities and it's just not appropriate for a city that claims itself to be a leader in the environmental movement. So there surely clearly changes in circumstances in the cumulative analysis that have happened since the program EIR was done and may be outdated by surrounding activities within the funk zone over the last few years. There is a significant hazard issue here that it's unclear, given that it's going to be addressed appropriately, there's no mitigation monitoring plan and no review by the Department of State Toxic Control. And as one who has actually remediated a Class III toxic site in the state of California, we're playing with fire. And without a very, very clear mitigation monitoring program that you would have if we had done an initial study, we may find this project to export environmental impacts to our community. So I believe we need to do this right. We need to do a negative declaration on this project. The use of the project, and as I noted my last time, this is an important site, but a hotel is allowed. So it's not a question of whether hotels allowed, it's whether this hotel in this configuration is appropriate at the scale that it is being proposed. And I think we need to clarify that and agree with Commissioner Barnwell's comments as to the intensive nature of this particular application. It's not to say that this project can't be better. I think it can be better. I think we have a situation in which we just don't have the resource agencies' comments. They're not on the project, they're on a particular segment, especially in the area of concern about flooding. I do not see a letter from FEMA, I do not see a letter from the Corps of Engineers on the flooding issue as to the garage. And I'm really concerned that with climate change, we're setting up a situation that we'll have. As one person who actually lived through the March miracle and had his car float away in the Garden Street underpass, I understand this area can be flooded in a flash flood situation. So I will not support the project without appropriate environmental review and I do not believe we have. Thank you. Commissioner Wiscombe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is a remediation action plan in the conditions of approval. So that's in their final remediation action plan and soil management plan approved by the Santa Barbara County Environmental Health Services. But I also wanted to point out that we've talked a lot about, there's been a lot of environmental studies done on this project already. There is a link on the Garden Street project website to additional technical studies and I would probably say it's additional technical studies and correspondence, but there's 23 to date. And I know that the applicant has more to do, but there's letters, there's conditions, and they've certainly been in touch with environmental health on several occasions, quite a few occasions. So I just wanted to make reference to that. Thank you.
Commissioner DeLucio, you have your light on.
Yeah, I want to clarify, you raised a good point about the garage. Are we allowed to ask the applicant, just to refresh our memories, what you're going to do in the garage, means you're going to use a parking to prepare for it so there won't be flooding in the garage?
The primary is that the entrances to the garage are above the base flood elevation. So just as the finished floor of the hotel has to be above the base flood, the entrances as well. So obviously, if we end up with a flood above the base flood elevation, which is, you know, a foot above what the standard is, there could be water that goes in the garage, but it would be pumped out, just as there's going to have to be a de-watering plan for the garage. And I think the important thing here that we haven't discussed is that this is a dirty site. This has got environmental issues and it's going to be a great cost to clean that up. That's a cost that hasn't been discussed, but it's a good thing that we're going to clean up this site.
Thank you for that answer. I appreciate it. And one other thing, if we were to move forward with this, I'd like to see a condition put in which, Commissioner Barnwell, about the local art. If we can come up with some kind of condition about a display of local art in the hotel lobbies. You want to, I guess, all right.
Yes, absolutely. That's the fun stuff, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So not seeing any more speakers, I'm going to, as the chair, take the prerogative to make a motion and see if I get a second. And my motion would be to reject the city staff's reliance on Section 15183 on the environmental review and remand the project back to staff for the completion of an initial study for public review and resource agency input.
I'll second that.
Discussion among my commissioners.
Mr. Chair, could you repeat that motion one more time?
I'm making a motion to reject the staff's determination of the use of Section 15183 for the environmental review, remand it back to the staff to do an initial study so we have the required public review and resource agency input into this process before we go for further consideration on the project.
Yes, you can.
I appreciate, I'm sorry, did you call?
Yes.
I appreciate you bringing that forward and it goes to what I was thinking about the negative deck monitoring report and everything in one nice packet, but I think the ship has sailed along at this point and also in recognition where I came from, maybe now time has changed, I haven't been on that commission for a good five years, we would have done a negative deck, but times have changed perhaps and now we have the Streamlining Act and it's allowing you to use CEQA, whatever that section is. So I have to respect that and I think you guys know where I'm coming from, where I would have liked to. I think it would have been better for you guys to have it all in package, with my agreement, but that's not. To me, I just can't at this point support that, though I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay. Commissioner Wardro.
So I continue to have deep concerns about the transparency and accuracy of this approach on CEQA and relying on these two decades old EIRs and the various studies provided by the applicant in coordination with city staff as a foundation that we're basing this exemption on. This approach still does not allow for the public to completely understand the environmental impacts of this. And given how much input there has been from the community, both in terms of the CEQA issue and obviously in our, and I think everyone's prioritization on housing and the importance of this, I think it's really important that we do this right. I think that it has already been proposed to this commission to provide a different type of exemption that proved to be wrong based on public comment. And I feel very concerned to approve this today without the ability for us to be able to say that we have done everything in our power to disclose all this information to the public, address the significant public comments that were raised in their concerns about this approach to CEQA. I think that that's important. I in no way disagree that the Wright family should be allowed to develop this property, but if we're going to develop this into a hotel, which is, from my perspective, of the needs of this community, is not what we need and is quite the contrary of that. If we are going to do this, we need to do this 100% right with the full disclosure to the public because I don't think there's another way. I don't think it's fair for us to decide to change and alter the landscape of the funk zone in such a significant way with a hotel that's going to be here for the next 100 years without providing the opportunity to do this with a negative declaration where we provide all of the information to the public and so that we are not receiving multiple comments from the public explaining that this entire approach is wrong. That is very concerning to me as I am not a CEQA expert. I want to make sure we do this right and I want to ensure that the public feels that this was a transparent approach where their feedback was valued and that we are prioritizing that.
Commissioner Wiscombe, then Commissioner Barnwell after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't support the motion. We have staff. Ms. Pujol has been on staff and done environmental review for a long time and I'm not in a position to say that her position was inadequate or that, and what I'm hearing up here is really arguments for why CEQA, why we need to do a negative deck. The reason why is because we have this big hotel project coming and we're impacting housing. There is no guarantee that this project would ever, or this land would ever be housing. And I think that this is, what's happening is that because it's a hotel project and it's distasteful to some people, that we're hiding behind CEQA. And I totally respect what Ms. Pujol has put forward. She's put a lot of work into it. She spent a lot of time explaining her position and I'm not in a position to say I don't agree with you and I think we should do something else.
Okay. But since as chair, I'll take the prerogative to respond. There is, as chair, I will take a prerogative to respond and cut you off, okay? Which is, it's not a case that it's a hotel because a hotel isn't allowed use. It's a question, is this project as it is currently proposed before us appropriate? It's not the use. I'll tell Mr. Gilbert, it's not the hotel use, it's the scale of it. It's got an underground garage, which we still don't have clarity. I know legally you might be able to do it, but is that good community planning? Okay? I just want to put that out there for everybody to understand. And the reason for the concern about the environmental review process is a public disclosure. The public needs to have an operating, this last batch, we had what, less than seven days even for us as members of the commission, much less the public that doesn't have that. We need to get the public to have time to look at this thing in the right manner of everything there. And we don't have a mitigation monitoring program that we will get. If we did have an ND, which is really important to me since we don't have a CUP. So it's the case of, we basically keep trying ways not to engage in an open process that's transparent for the community on this project. I mean, I was surprised the first time it came in with a categorical exemption, which I didn't think it qualified at that time because it had habitat. As soon as you found that there was a delineated wetland, this project should have been in the ND process, but they didn't do it and it was a Catorcy site. I mean, I do not understand why we continue not to see a negative declaration based on an initial study that is processed through public review and the public resource agencies have an opportunity to comment on.
Mr. Chair.
I just don't get it.
Mr. Chair, I know you're responding to my comments. I don't know why this commission, if you really felt strongly about it, why you didn't ask for the negative declaration at the last hearing and instead just let the process go.
We expect, we expect.
Excuse me, let me finish. I have the floor. If you felt that public transparency was so important and that's where we are, the public transparency on this project is, people don't like the project. It is big, yes. I think Mr. Cornell said it very well. The site's going to be cleaned up. That is a really good thing. And I don't know how the public, how we can be any more transparent on the project based on what Ms. Pujol has done and based on the fact that we now have 23 studies and more on the way and there will be remediation plans, et cetera, that will be approved by environmental health. It's very transparent to me.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Why can't we have a mitigation monitoring? Can't we do that?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, yes, you can have monitoring as a condition regardless of not having an initial study. And I also do want to point out that an initial study process would not have changed the way we have treated environmental hazards. We would have gotten to the same point of working with EHS and the same requirements would have applied. So that does not change. It's being addressed the exact same way it would be with an initial study. If your commission desires some kind of monitoring component that can be added to the conditions of approval, please let us know.
I would like to add that whenever the motion comes up. And also, Ms. Pujol, I want to also make sure you understand that I greatly appreciate the work that you've done. But I think you can see here that the commission, if we follow the same CEQA policy again, it might be nice if in the staff report you let us know, you know, okay, fishing game kicked in and the Corps of Engineers kicked in, so that we're aware of that and so is the general public. And maybe those letters or those documents that came from those very powerful scientific groups are made available. I think that's the issue here for me as well. The word transparency, boy, talk about an overused word, but I think it just means everybody wants to know what the heck went on, who looked at it. And that isn't quite clear here. clear here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner DeLucio is next.
Okay, yeah, if we can put a condition about the mitigating, mitigation monitoring, that would be great. I guess it goes back to, you guys do a great job, staff, and I understand about this, about the CEQA right now, but I think I probably would have organized the conditions a little better. There, there, a lot of them are template, right? A lot of the conditions are template conditions, but there are actually, I can go through here and call out maybe six of them which relate to the CEQA. If they could have been organized a little better, maybe under the, you could have put environmental, you know, things you need to do and then listed all six in an organized fashion, that, that would have been very helpful to me. But as far as this, we've been going on for four hours now, I think we have transparency here. I think, I do, I feel like, I, I mean, I had to hunt and dig for everything, but I think everything is here that, that addresses what needs to be done and I think it's, and I, and I think staff, if we can put the monitoring in here, it'd be fine and I think at the end of the day, it will get done. So that's why I'm at this point in favor of just moving this along.
Okay, Commissioner Wardlow.
Thank you. I, I agree, this has been a long hearing and there's been a lot of discussion. I think that the point around transparency and the point around getting this right is that it is not noted, you know, it, from my perspective, we've had three hearings on this mainly because of the fact that the project was brought forward with the wrong CEQA exemption and without the housing study that was blatantly required in the 1984 specific plan. That, that, that is part of the reason why we're here on the third hearing today and given that it's taken three different hearings to get to the point where the applicant is willing to do six units and, you know, $500,000 towards this Affordable Trust Fund, I see that as significant progress and it's because of this deliberative approach and the engagement of this community and the engagement of this commission that this project has gotten better, that we are more addressing the needs of our community, that we are actually working towards, I still think there's a lot more to do in terms of effectively mitigating the impact this will have on housing, but we've come a long way and it's because we're trying to do it right and we're having this deliberative discussion and that also applies to CEQA. And I think it's important that this commission really prioritize that the public's input has been impactful in this discussion, it has made this project better and I would hate that we were to move forward with a CEQA process that has been flagged over and over again that may be inadequate and us to make the wrong decision as this commission. I believe that we should seek a negative declaration and that that is the right thing to do for this scale of this project.
Okay, with that, I think we deliberated, can we, the question, can we call the question? Have a vote.
Thank you, Chair Bauckey, I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner DeLucio?
No.
Commissioner Lodge?
No.
Commissioner Barnwell?
No.
Commissioner Wiskom?
No.
Commissioner Wardlow, or Vice Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Chair Bauckey?
Yes.
Motion fails with a 2-4 vote.
Okay, moving on. So now we have to discuss the project now that we've gone past CEQA, so.
We discuss it or we take a vote on it?
Well, I'm looking for motions or something. Victor, you, your name's first on the screen.
I will make a motion at this point, help me here to, for approval of the project with some, some conditions, obviously. If we can put a condition about local on-site mitigation monitoring in, in terms, and also maybe we can reorganize the, the conditions and, and, and put them in an order where it calls off what the environmental would be, because they're within the, in the conditions of approval, but they're all over the place, if we can consolidate those and maybe come up with a mitigation monitoring condition as well and also the $500,000 into the Affordable Housing Fund. I think, I think I'm covering everything here, so that's my motion.
I'd second that motion.
Chair Bauckey, Commissioner DeLucio, can I paraphrase that or just so I understand for the record? Your moving staff recommendation with the inclusion to Section 1F, adding new Section 7, which is in the general conditions for the Housing Trust Fund, that the owner shall voluntarily contribute $500,000 to the Santa Barbara Local Housing Trust Fund. You'd be adding, did you add the art into your motion?
Yes.
That you'd be adding a new section into the general conditions as Section 11, that the owner shall continuously display art from local artists in the lobby?
Mm-hmm.
And then with regards to the mitigate, the monitoring, I'll pass it over to Ms. Arsenega to say where that would go and what that would be.
Typically that would go, oh, thank you, Ms. Allstringer, that would typically go construction implementation requirements, Section E, unless there's for some reason a desire to have it be a part of the recorded conditions as well.
Ms. Arsenega, is this regarding the monitoring?
Yes.
Maybe prior to building permit?
Yes, it's, it's the, part of the conditions of approval, so a lot of that would be prior to building permit, wouldn't it?
Oh, apologies. So the, the standard condition language, just to be clear, is what, what we're talking about. So we use this condition on other projects that do not have an initial study or mitigation measures. Its condition monitor required submit the plan, submit to the planning division a contract with a qualified independent consultant to act as a condition monitor. Both the monitor and the contract are subject to approval by the city's community development director. The monitor shall be responsible for assuring full compliance with the conditions of approval to the city and the contract shall include the following at a minimum, the schedule of monitoring conditions, a method for monitoring the conditions, a list of reporting procedures, a list of monitors to be hired, and submittal of reports during demolition, submittal of a final monitoring report, and the monitor shall also have the authority over all other monitors and specialists. So I agree with, with Ms. Pujol that it would be required prior to building permit issuance because that condition is specifying providing that contract and the monitoring.
So that'd be one of the conditions and with, would we, could we group the, group that, under that somewhere, what we're talking about that they need to comply with?
So it does need to, to be general in a sense because these aren't mitigation measures, they're just monitoring the conditions of approval.
Okay, that's fine. And I mean, I still think that, like, if you read the conditions of approval, you're calling them out in different places of what needs to be done.
Sure, I think you also had the suggestion of having a condition that lists perhaps the technical studies that would apply to the project, would that be more appropriate?
That may, yes.
In addition, yeah.
Yes, in addition, that would work.
Okay, I think we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Arsenega, in addition to the technical studies, there's some letters from environmental health that, that are really specific to analyzing specific areas, so could, could those be included also?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And that's a common practice that we, we reference, that the recommendations from environmental health are included as part of the project.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lodge has heard.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I'll, I'll make my comments on, on the motion and question, I, I don't think we're meeting the standard that's required in the specific plan as to minimizing the adverse impacts on the city's housing supply. The appropriate number to mitigate in this case is 25 and not 11 and not something short of that and I will not support a project that does not meet the conditions of the specific plan, which is clearly outlined in the document in 1983. Commissioner Wardlow.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. I agree with Chair Bauckey. You know, we've had lots of discussion on this and I, and I agree, though this project has come a long way in terms of mitigation of, on the housing front, it still is not meeting the full intent of what I see as both in the specific plan as well as in the specific plan's EIR that specifically calls out the fact that this new development could generate more demand for housing, that then would make this inconsistent, that then would make this project not feasible. So combined with the fact that we are trying to move forward with CEQA in a way that is not, or that is being flagged continuously as a, as a problem, I, I, I will not be supporting this project as, as it currently stands.
Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to point, in, under the specific plan, development proposals for areas A, B, and C shall be accompanied by an analysis of short and long-term impacts upon the city's housing stock as discussed in the final EIR. The study at a minimum shall develop strategies and programs to minimize any potential adverse impacts consistent with the city policy at the time of the development plan review. Minimize is not eliminate and I think that, that this project and the applicants have gone a long way towards minimizing the impacts with providing the housing units on site and the contribution of the $500,000 to the Housing Trust Fund, that goes to people, that goes to organizations, 501(c)(3)'s and our City Housing Authority, who, who actually are in the business of building affordable housing and that, that is, that's where, that's where it belongs, really. They, they're in the business of doing it, they know how to do it, they know how to, they know how to leverage funds to do it and so I think that's a very important aspect of, of what's happening up here now. Thank you.
Okay, if I may, I, I agree with where it's going, I just think the amount is woefully inadequate. If you did a normal analysis at $300,000 per unit that is not being met, and that number is 35, I'm giving them a discount to get to 25, much less mine, and then I'm going to get the, go down to 19 with the six. But, you know, that number should be, you know, 19 times $300,000, not $500,000. It's just woefully inadequate to meet the standards that the specific plan is calling for, in my opinion. So, once again, I will not support the motion without that number being significantly increased to meet at least the minimum obligation under the specific plan. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnwell.
We need to, this, okay, the legal's going to kick in here, I mean, I'm sure, but we need to talk about this outside of this particular applicant's proposal. We, we need to talk with the city council and we need to iron out the wrinkles on this thing because here we are recognizing that what we're, what we're requested of these people isn't even really on the books, but they gave it to us because we squeezed them and I'm glad they responded the way they did and I appreciate it, but we, we need the black letter code that makes it work easier and we don't have that yet. So I, I think we as a planning commission need to turn to staff and say, how do we get together and talk about this stuff a little bit more? Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Wardlow and then after that, Commissioner DeLucio.
Respectfully, you know, respectfully, Commissioner Barnwell, I, I agree that this is not in the code in, in the specific way that we would want it to be, but if we are relying on this specific plan and this specific plan's EIR, it is very clearly spelled out as the 1983 specific plan EIR noted, "Housing demand within the South Coast area, new employment generating developments shall be in balance with available housing resources at prices affordable to projected new employees who will be moving into the Santa Barbara from outside the South Coast market area. Project is potentially inconsistent due to its generation of indirect housing demand from employment generation." I, I don't know how we could be more clear than back 40 years ago, the council understood that this, that housing was an issue and today it is, it's, it's not fair to sit up here and say that the, that, you know, the housing prices is not a dire situation. And so if it's called out in two aspects in a plan from over 40 years ago, I think it's explicitly clear that housing needed to be considered as part of this overall development of, of, of one of the last, you know, big pieces of land on our direct coast. I think this is a critical component of addressing this appropriately, which is why this commission has now talked about this in three separate hearings and, and, you know, from a perspective of, you know, I guess nobody likes the word transparency anymore, but from the perspective that we had to have three hearings on this to get to a point where we're actually even starting to mitigate housing, the, the impact on housing. It, it shows why I think it's so important that we get this right and that we hold this whole development to a high standard that, that ensures that we're doing the right thing for our community. This is going to be here for 100 years. I want to ensure that we do this right and I, and I definitely believe that, yes, we've made progress on the housing mitigation, but of course, you know, I would have liked to have seen more, but I want to recognize that the applicant has made significant progress on this. But, you know, I, I do not feel that there's in any way that this is not explicitly clear that evaluating the housing needs and evaluating the impact that this proposed project will have on our community is, is mandatory.
Commissioner DeLucio.
Before I forget, maybe on May 3rd, aren't we having a joint with the city council? Maybe this can be one of the topics. And I know ultimately fees are more, it's more the council that would, would tackle that, this topic, is, you know, unless they give it to us to, to make recommendations, but maybe that's something we can look at because I, I do think we're deficient in terms of the fees that we charge for housing or not housing, you know, we don't have inclusionary fees and all that, so it's maybe discussing. But as far as the, the report that was done, the housing report, I do want to commend that EPS, that EPS did the report, is it, is an excellent company. I know you've, you've, we've worked with other cities, I know you've worked with Cover City, for example, one of the cities, and so I just want to commend you on that. So you did what your assignment was and again, I think we're overburning ourselves on the housing here when this, this site is a hotel and the only reason the housing is in there because it was part of a, a call-out of a specific plan that was done in 1983. I think this site should have been developed a long time ago, frankly. I think there should have been actually a sunset on the specific plan after so many years. I never heard, you know, it's so old and typically sometimes you put sunset dates on stuff, so maybe that would have made it happen sooner. So anyway, at this point, I'm ready to vote when, when, when the question's called.
Okay, Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One little quick shorty, I, I agree with everything that Ms. Wardlow said. It's hard to get there under the tools we currently have. The 500, I want to tell you why the $500,000 changed my opinion, because I work with the Santa Barbara Housing Authority and the Santa Barbara Housing Authority can take $500,000 and multiply it between six and 10 times when it comes to federal funding to match it. Knowing that, and that's another thing, staff, if we find ourselves in this position next time, we might have someone from the Housing Authority come in and say, a $500,000 donation given to us at the Santa Barbara Housing Authority will multiply to 6 million or whatever that number is, because it's a big number. That's the thing that changed my mind on this, but Ms. Wardlow is completely correct, we're, we're not there yet, but the tools we have are inadequate and I, I'm not ready to kill the project because of that, but I, I think we're a long way and I think the staff also is understanding and I hope everybody in the city is understanding where this planning commission is going, which is housing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, not seeing any more lights on, we'll call the question.
Thank you, Chair Bauckey, I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiskom?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wardlow?
No.
Chair Bauckey?
No.
Motion passes with a 4-2 vote.
Okay, moving on to our agenda.
Pardon the interruption, could you please state your reason for no votes for both of the motions? I missed that the first time.
As, as to the, the no vote on, on the CEQUAs, I don't think we're getting the appropriate public disclosure or the input from the public resource agencies as required statutorily under CEQA if we did a negative declaration. And as to the, the last, the, I don't think, two things. One, the project I don't think is, as it's currently configured, meets the standard of, of good planning and, and the other one, that's primarily because of some physical issues and the other, the, the other comment I had was just the mitigation that's required in the specific plan is woefully inadequate and doesn't even meet the minimum. So those are, those are the reasons.
We'll also need it for the first initial motion, which that motion was to reject the project, so.
So Commissioner Barnwell, Commissioner DeLucio, Commissioner Lodge, and Commissioner Wiscombe will need to state their reasons for a no vote.
Chair Bauckey, it's not a legal requirement that you provide your no vote, so, no, so
Chair Bauckey, also if we can announce the appeal period.
Yeah, so the appeal period is 10 days, 10 calendar days. Thank you. Okay, that's fine where we were last. We'll take, give me about 30 seconds or more so I can find where I did all my paper here.
Mr. Chair, I have a report from the last ABR meeting, if you want. Let me go ahead and let you look.
We're going to get there real quickly. Okay, so, we're now, and first off, thank you, staff, for everything you did on this project. That's a whole lot of work. Next is the administrative agenda. The staff hearing, Officer Liaison Report is first, but Commissioner Boss is not here, so we're going to move on to other committee and liaison reports, and I have Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the Historic Landmarks Commission meeting, I'm, I'm sorry, ABR had final design approval before, for the Police Department building. That was on February 20th. And at that meeting, the architect, Mr. Cornell, referred back to the first proposed design, which he said one of the ABR members, Dennis Whalen, said it was belligerently modernist. And so we'd never forget that. And so I went and looked at that hearing and at that design, and, okay, Amara, could you?
Amara, can you put up the staff computer again, please?
And here are some of the, these are the drawings of the two views from that first hearing. And what, not only was it described as belligerently modernist, it was unfortunate, austere, cold, unwelcoming, needs to be more architecturally palatable. However, on the 20th, on, on February 20th, when they, the comments that were made about that design, which you see now on, there's up there, elegant, outstanding, exquisite, can't be proud, can be proud of it, gorgeous, excellent, those were the adjectives used to describe the approved plan. And I, I wanted to show these to you, how despite all these hearings, we end up with a better building. And it's, it's worth the effort. Thank you, Mr. Cornell. That concludes my.
Okay, no, sorry, I was looking at the pictures, sorry. Nice work, Brian. Okay, so.
She's right.
Yes. Okay, Commissioner Barnwell, do you have a report?
Yes, the Transportation and Circulation Committee was on a topic that's, I think, warmed everybody's heart. It was Safe Routes to School, which they described in detail. They go out to all these various elementary schools, and they show them how to ride bikes, and if the kids don't have bikes, they get them bikes, and if they don't have helmets, they get them helmets. And everyone was very happy. The issue came up of, are we training them for e-bikes? And how do e-bikes fit into bike paths, roadways, et cetera? So they're working on that for their next iteration of what they teach. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other commissioners have a report?
HLC yesterday's meeting was canceled. They meet again on March 13th, and also, the airport meets on March 6th, and they'll, I think they'll be discussing the master plan, which is actually going to come before us on March 7th. So that's my report, Chair.
Okay, anybody else? Nope, okay, I have one. The objective design work group met at 2 o'clock today during our hearing, so I have no idea what they did, but they did have a meeting to, to discuss the recommendations on the document to bring it forward to this commission and the other review bodies. So, thank you. With that, I'm going to call, because I don't have anything to talk about on the discussions on subcommittees today. I'm going to call the meeting adjourned at 5:29 PM, and that concludes our February 29, 2024 Planning Commission hearing. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, March 7th, 2024, and thank you all for being here.